All rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you'd all please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our servicemen and women and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. And if you would remain standing, Councilor Linehan.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. It's my honor and privilege to share a moment of silence for Ward 3 resident, but more importantly, an outstanding member of our community that I think a lot of folks in the audience are here to help commemorate tonight, and that's Tom Fagley, who was for over 30 years the director of the Bread of Life and so much more to our community. I knew this was going to be hard, but I'm going to try to do my best. I actually have a commendation from the mayor that I'd love to read that the administration was able to actually give to Tom before he passed. He, as many of you know, had been in poor health, but really declined very quickly and unexpectedly passed last week. And I'm just so touched that this was able to be given to him, presented to him before he did pass away. So I'm going to read that, and then I actually would like to close with a poem that he wrote that I want to share some of our community members for getting to me, some of his friends who are here. They selected a poem that was meaningful that any of you who knew Tom know he was an artist and a servant, and so I hope that this encapsulates that. So I'll first read the commendation from the mayor. Whereas Thomas J. Fagley was the first director of the Bread of Life in Malden, Mass, and held that position from 1987 until 2018, was previously employed by Tri-City Community Mental Health Center in Malden directing two-day programs, including The Gathering Place, a psychiatric social club, began his association with the Bread of Life on December 2, 1984, by volunteering with what was then called the St. Paul's Wednesday Supper Program at St. Paul's Parish in Malden, was asked in 1986 to serve as chairman of the newly-formed Bread of Life Committee and to be the first doorman for the program, was hired by St. Paul's Parish in June 1987 to fill two positions, minister of mission and meals coordinator with a new title Bread of Life Coordinator, became executive director of Bread of Life Inc. upon its incorporation as a nonprofit tax-exempt entity in 1992, oversaw the growth of the Bread of Life from an evening meal program serving 150 people per night to a food security organization providing over 1 million meals per year through food pantries in Malden and Everett, grocery delivery to senior citizens, congregate meals and food delivery to homeless individuals and families in shelter, is a published poet, painter, and songwriter, has been an outspoken advocate and witness for peace and justice his whole life, has been an exemplar of selflessness and compassion to the people of Malden and surrounding communities, has walked alongside people who are marginalized in any way, including by poverty, race, homelessness, mental health problems, and substance use issues, helped to launch the Bread of Life building project by envisioning a central headquarters to bring all Bread of Life programs to one location, and led the Bread of Life through the process of identifying and purchasing 54 Eastern Avenue in Malden. Now therefore, Mayor Gary Christiansen on this day of May 1, 2023, on behalf of the city hereby thanks and commends Thomas for his lifetime of service to the community and for his example of selfless dedication, and would thanks for the time indulgence. I'll also read this poem. This was written in 1980, and it's titled "Tell Me Your Stories." Tell me your stories, please, may I journey with you, wrapped in the protective words of your tales. I shall be silent if you wish, I'll not even bring my shadow, as you relight old tapers. Or I shall listen, to give voice to silent questions that may illuminate the way. Tell me your stories, that I may no friendship with the stranger I am not. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Linehan. That was very touching. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Cologne Hayes. Here. Councilor Condon.
Here.
Councilor Crowe.
Here.
Councilor Linehan.
Here.
Councilor McDonald.
Here.
Councilor O'Malley.
Here.
Councilor Seaco.
Here.
Councilor Simonelli.
Here.
Councilor Spatafora.
Here.
Councilor Winslow.
Here.
Council President Murphy.
Here. For those of you in attendance, under the open meeting laws, please be advised that UMA Urban Media Arts will be taping tonight, so there will be video and audio recording of this meeting. First, go to our business.
Paul Hammersley, Addiction Recovery Resource Specialist, will appear before the city council to discuss outreach numbers, outcomes, and youth homelessness, as well as other issues covering on behalf of the Board of Health Substance Abuse Prevention Program.
Thank you, Mr. Hammersley. If you'd come to the microphone and please state your name and address.
My name's Paul Hammersley, and I live at 21 Everett Street, Malden, Mass. So I appreciate the time. I've been called before you to give you some information, some numbers, and could I approach to give you all just a packet?
You may.
So I'm assuming I was asked to come, so I'm going to take this opportunity to let everybody know what the city's doing with substance use disorder, our numbers, what things are looking like out there on the street with Malden Cares, because we have a lot of things going on that you may or may not be familiar with. So I'm going to just take this time. If you would turn right to the first page, there's four pages, but just to the first page of what I've given you, Malden versus the national averages. So I'm just going to just read from the bottom. So Malden made 70 detox placements, of which 33 placements were people who experienced multiple attempts at recovery. A total of 37 people were placed. To date, we remain in contact with 26 of those individuals, and 16 of those people remain in sobriety today for a success rate of 43%. Compared to the national average, which is below 20%, these same calculations for national statistics would have just seven people remaining in sobriety today. The model that Malden has adopted with the Recovery Resource Specialist and the CARES team is working. Malden is double the national average of the success rate. And I just simply want to go to page 2, and I'm just going to highlight a couple of paragraphs. So in the second paragraph down, just to show you the numbers, in 2021, Malden had 110 overdoses resulting in 17 fatalities. In 2022, Malden had 87 overdoses resulting in seven fatalities, and let's be clear, one overdose and one fatality is too many. But for the information that I'm giving you, Malden overdose, our overdose is decreased by 21%, and our fatal overdose is decreased by 53% last year, which is pretty amazing here for Malden, while others are increasing. And then I want to go on to tell you, the national number for fatal overdose increased by 22% for the year ending 2021. We firmly believe that the CARES being visible, the support of the mayor's office, the city council, along with the MPD and Malden Fire Department, coupled with the availability of recovery resources and the constant flow of online information from MOA, Malden CARES, have directly impacted the decrease in both overdoses and fatalities. Most certainly, Malden is succeeding as the national stats continue to rise. And then in the paragraph right at the bottom, right below, it's almost at the bottom. As a team, we look at the numbers for the surrounding, just for the surrounding communities, and we ask, what is the driving pattern for fewer overdoses than our city? For example, what can we do differently that we might implement with our program? These are goals for CARES as leadership looks into how can we grow and improve. And then the last two pages are just for your own use, and I'm going to just share, you know, some pretty amazing statistics. So these are the year in review. What you're looking at on these last two pages is everything we've done in one year. This is all 2022. So again, 70 individuals were placed in detox. Actively using, we came across 410. Recovery coaching, which we have nine recovery coaches on the street, we're actually recovery coaching 242 individuals, and a recovery coach meets people where they're at, if you don't know what that is. We're in constant contact with that individual, trying to help that individual navigate the recovery world. And then houseless, we came across 548 people that didn't have a place to live. We've given 111 referrals for those individuals. Mental health challenges, we came across 138. And then, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but as you get to the bottom, you can look at, we have ages, you know, 20 to 30, 30 to 40, 40 to 50, how many of those individuals we engaged, and then the diverse population is below that of all the people that we were serving. And, you know, I'd be amiss if I didn't mention the Warming Center, the work that we did in the Warming Center. This winter, seven individuals were placed into detox. Five out of the seven, and now this is in addition to the numbers I just gave you, five out of seven of those people remain in treatment, while the other two were still in contact with. The process of starting into recovery is a daunting task, emotionally, physically, financially. For the newly-recovered individual, we help navigate the system, the steps, and the fears that often accompany early recovery. Along with detox, we facilitate getting into sober living and the needed resources to pay for living quarters. We remain in contact with all seven of these individuals, and only one has left sober living, and they remain sober. Through the combined collaboration of Malden CARES, Elliot Services, this year at the Malden Warming Center, we were able to connect individuals with various types of housing to help people get off the streets and sheltered. Some have been placed in what we like to call SROs, which is a single-room occupancy. Others are placed in hotels until long-term housing can be identified. With the collaboration, we helped eight individuals get off the street in SROs, single-room occupancies. As they are housed, we continue to work with them and fill out all kinds of other paperwork and try to obtain jobs, volunteer opportunities, and we have two other people waiting for SROs who are being sheltered currently in hotels. And lastly, it's pretty amazing, we as a community worked very hard with our legal team, Cambridge Health Alliance, their legal team, and I think we're the first in the state, don't, I don't know of any other community that has recovery coaches in their high school. Myself and Paul Bell, who is here today, we are in Malden High School every Thursday from 11 to 12, meeting students right where they're at. We're in the lunchroom, we see 1,800 students every week, and we have a table with resources, and they come up and they ask various questions, and we're also with Cambridge Health Alliance. We have a clinician with us if something was a higher level of care. So it's a really, really good opportunity for the city, for us, to stay in contact with our youth. And since we've been there, we've come across a couple of homeless individuals, teens, that we're assisting. Right now, we've got one we just placed in an SRO, right on Ferry Street, and one we're working with currently as we speak to help this individual get everything he needs. And that's my presentation, and I really appreciate your time, and if anyone has questions, I would love to answer any questions you may have. But again, I really appreciate the council's time. I can't thank you enough.
We do have a number of lights on, so I'm going to go right to the folks who would like to speak with you. Councilor Cologne Hayes, I saw you on first. You seem to have disappeared. One second, let me put you on.
Thank you. Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Paul. That was great, and you do great work. I know you've come before us a number of times, and the Finance Committee as well, so I don't have to repeat myself. Thank you very much, Paul, also for being here. My kids, who go to Malden High, tell me about seeing you all there and how great it is, so thank you for that. I just had a couple of questions, because I'm curious to know, like, if, what do you think contributes to like how well Malden is doing? What are we doing different that our overdose rates are down? And where do you get these numbers from? So like in the 2021, it says like 110 overdoses and fatalities, is that from like hospitals or 911 calls?
It's Citaldo, it's police, it's fire, and it's common knowledge. You can get right into it in Google. You can look at every community across the state and see what's hap, it's usually about a year and a half behind.
Oh, okay.
So 2023 numbers obviously aren't out, and 2022's numbers just came out, but we stay in constant contact with the Malden Police, with Elliot Services, Citaldo, we all work together. I get every overdose report. It comes to my desk, and I didn't, I should have said, we also do door knocks. I go to every house, myself and PJ. We did four door knocks last week. Any call that is drug or opioid-related, we go. So those numbers, and a lot of the national numbers are from the CDC, it's on there, you can, those are legit numbers, it's right from the CDC.
Yeah, no, I know. What's the question?
But our overdose numbers come between Malden Police, and I mean, that's all the ones that are reported, right? I'm sure there are things out there that do not get reported, that do not get 911 calls, but these are all coming from incoming calls to 911.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then I'm sure showing up at someone's door and knocking for care makes a huge difference, so.
It makes all the difference in the world.
And that's where the care is.
And I want to answer something else you had asked, why is Malden doing so well? You, that's why. Like, I stand here today, and you might tell me, like, I'm not doing anything, but you all are, because you support the work that we do. It starts with the mayor, it goes to the council, it's the state delegation, and everyone believes in the work we're doing. So that's how we are able to get the funding we need to do the work we do. I have all the other communities calling me, asking us for our blueprint, but simply it's you all. It's the mayor, the council, the state delegation, and obviously, we have some really good people working for us, but without you, there is no us.
Thank you so much. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I just want to say, Paul, you know, coming from another addict, you know, I appreciate all the work that you do do out here, because just experience and the, what you go through when you are an addict, and people that you can't face, and the self-esteem part, and being able to handle that on a day-to-day basis is very difficult. And being, as you know, and being an addict yourself, sometimes you got to take some time off, and Paul and I do that every once in a while, we'll go to a meeting together or something, because sometimes you got to give yourself a little distance and work on yourself, but that's a whole 12-step thing, so I won't get into that right now. But I got to say also, I'm very lucky and privileged that this past October, I was appointed over in Everett as to doing the same thing that Paul does, being the Substance Abuse Coordinator. And, you know, Paul and PJ have been a, Linda Cochran have been a godsend for me, because we're at the stage now where, you know, we're got our support team, and we're ready to go out on the streets and start doing the outreach and the outreach and the outreach, and that is very, very important. And I got to say, Paul, I appreciate it, I just want everybody to know that, you know, Paul and I talk a lot, PJ and I talk a lot, because it's woven Everett, Malden, Metford, you know, it's a vicious circle. So, you know, we have some scholarship programs that we have, and I'll call him, he'll call me, I'll, you know, hey, I got a guy over here, I need to get him a bed real quick over at this place, you know, so there's some really good cooperation teamwork. I know both mayors wanted to see that happen, and we're lucky enough that we've known each other for a long time to do that. And I just want to say that, you know, Paul's down at Bowden Street Apartments, we've got a big program going on down there with community policing, and Paul's been down there, because we've been struggling with a little bit of substance abuse stuff going on. So I just want to say, Paul, you know, I've always said that you have done a fantastic job when it comes to outreach and the program, and you, you know, and I appreciate you saying it's us, why Malden is down on its numbers, and why it's you. It's you. It's your perseverance, you know, and, you know, your passion to do what you do, and for 12 years you've been doing this now, and I haven't seen you slow down yet, so don't. And I really appreciate it, brother. Great job.
Thank you, Chris. And Chris mentioned a name, and I just have to, all this data in front of you, that is from Linda Cochran. Linda does all the work behind the scenes, and she's not here, but she's watching us on television, but Linda is nothing short of amazing, and I just want you all to know that's where this comes from.
Yeah. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Counselor Simonelli. Councilor Linehan.
Thank you, Madam President. I was kind of hoping I wouldn't have to go after Counselor Simonelli, because I knew he'd have like an amazing perspective. But I actually think it works out great, because what I wanted to piggyback on was kind of digging into what you alluded to, which is like you're doing a lot, you and PJ are doing a lot yourselves. I see you out there when I get off the train every day. I know everything else that's going on. Are there resources that you need to not be the only ones going alone out there, and is that something that we as a council can help to start to think about? Because I will say, that is my only concern, is like burnout and making sure that the self-care happens and that we're building something sustainable.
Yep.
Because it is for sure a regional model that I know other people are looking to, but I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of the people that are involved here and make sure you have what you need.
I really appreciate you saying that, Counselor, and it always boils down to the number one thing, and it's funding, right? We've been able to do this work. Now, I am employed through the city of Malden. We just got a chance to hire PJ, because I was inundated with all of this work by myself. So PJ just come on through the opioid settlement money, and now the Malden CARES team, which employs 10 coaches, and we're out in the community, we're going to be starting in Bowden Street in June, every Monday night, we're going to be in Bowden Street, and then every Thursday night, I'll be calling one of you, because each Thursday night, we have a street team that's going to, I'm going to offer, do you need a spot in your ward? And we're going to come and set up. But when ARPA runs out, December 31 of 2024, I think it is.
24.
We will hope that it's not in our hands anymore, because this program unfortunately will not be funded unless we try to figure out a way to keep it going. So to that point, if there is a way we could try to keep this going, this can be a national model. I have Reading, Wakefield, everybody going, everybody's calling, all the way going up, and they're asking how we're doing it, you know, so yeah, it's always funding, but thank you for saying that.
Well, just thank you again, and it's always going to be a yes for me if you want to come to my ward. I think it's truly everywhere, the need is everywhere. I get that feedback from my residents constantly about the work that you're doing, so just thank you again, and stay in touch with how we can be helpful.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald.
Yeah, thank you. Obviously, I, you know, my appreciation is profound, just like my colleagues, and this is, these numbers are very compelling. Thank you to you and to Linda for pulling this together. So that's just, this level of clarity is just so, it's compelling, and I wanted, I had turned on my light to make a comment in the direction of where Counselor Linehan was going, which is to remind my colleagues here that what I think we know, but maybe folks who are watching may not quite catch, is that we got to be prepared to sustain this work, and that it's priceless how much network and trust and relationships we will have built through the Malden CARES program, but when ARPA runs out, we have to sustain this work. So I just want to say, you have my commitment, I'm sure among many, to figure out how we got to do that. And just on a personal note, you know, I want to say, I'm always so impressed with the two of you, PJ and Paul, but also with all the recovery coaches, with the amount of humanity that you bring to your work, like just the level of personal care and fighting the dehumanization that comes from homelessness, substance abuse, addiction. You know, I never see you extend anything but kindness and respect and mutuality, and I think that's a part of the recipe too for success, and I just wanted to personally appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't want to be redundant, but thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you, Counselor.
You know, I call you, work together on a few couple of things, but I think, you know, really what you do bring, besides what Counselor McDonald just said sort of about the humanity, is, you know, you not just focus on the substance or the addiction, but really, you really support the whole person, you know, around the housing and some of the other things, the food insecurity, the getting a job, the, everything that really helps somebody move their life forward. So I think, you know, for all the work that you are doing, you're just doing amazing work, and so I just congratulate you and want to keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crowe. Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, Paul, I know, you know, we saw you out there right this afternoon at the tea station, so, and I just know, just seeing you and PJ around, I mean, you're always, you're relentlessly tackling this multifaceted problem. I mean, you see all the different things that you're having to do to really meet people where they are with their substance abuse disorder, and I think that's the really, what you're learning is that you really have to meet people where they are, and that's what this whole program and the coaches are doing and being out there. So just thank you, and, you know, always happy to have you, we'll be out there in Ward 6 sometime, often on the trail in Joseph's Gardens, so happy to come out again.
Thank you.
And however you need us, we're there for you, and thank you again for your work. Great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. Counselor Spatafora.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't want to be redundant, but I think I will, but I will say this. I know you'll take this the right way. I mean, everybody's been thanking you, but it's everybody that stands behind you.
That's right.
It's certainly the Linda Cochrins and the PJs of the world and the rest of the team, you know, from, I get to see, I think, like some of the other counselors, the full spectrum, you know, we see you going out into the community, we see you at the Warming Center in the winter, try to deal with that segment of the population in terms of their recovery, a family member that you've dealt with a couple of times, unfortunately. So I've seen the full spectrum of your team and built some friendships, and then, you know, the fundraising, the capability, it, you know, it's just, it's in all honesty, it's great appreciation that we want to extend to you and your organization, and I, they're only, I think it's important to also note, the recovery coaches are only recently getting paid because of ARPA money. They, a lot of them, if not most of them, were doing it voluntarily.
That's correct.
From the volunteer capacity, so kudos for them for doing something while getting a paycheck, and we are able to use some of those funding in the time being, but, you know, your efforts are invaluable. We certainly don't want to see, I would love to see you not have a job in the community doing this, and I'm sure you would be, right? But we know that's not realism, and I think your contributions to the city of Malden and surrounding towns are certainly an unfortunate circumstance of the times, but we, I'm glad the mayor and the council sees to put a little bit of money into the, hopefully, the preventedness of this terrible tragic disease. But unfortunately, I know we'll be working together in the years to come, and like Counsel Karen McDonald said, I think the next step of this journey will be looking for additional funding to keep your organization going forward. So thank you.
Thank you. I do want to mention, on the back of that Malden CARES pamphlet that you all have, this is scan code, and that scan code could be very important for you in your respective communities. If you scan that code, it instantly is going to take you to one of three things. You can pick youth, adult, or family. You click it, takes you right to all the resources. So this way here, you won't be caught saying, gee, I don't know what to do. So if somebody needed something, you could scan the back of that code and get resources that you need. It's pretty amazing. Yeah. There you go.
Thank you, Counselor Spatafora. From the chair, I just wanted to say thank you, Paul. We work closely together on a number of things, but I also just wanted to take this time, we talk a lot, we have talked a lot this evening about the addict and the person, you know, who is kind of, can't get out of the use of drugs, but one of the things that you do do, which I think is providing an extraordinary service to the families who are confused, who don't know where to go, so I would like, you know, anyone listening tonight to realize that you are here not just for the addict, but you are here for the whole family, and if anyone, a mother, a husband, a brother, a sister, a child, has any questions, they can reach out to you, or PJ, and you will be there to help walk them through the trauma that they're going through, trying to deal with the addict. So it's just a, you know, you've wrapped it up so that you really, you know, take care of not just the individual and all the individuals. of not just the individual and all the individual's needs, but the family as a tot- in totality. So thank you so much for everything you all do. You know, I just, we're all, we're all just thankful that you're here in our community and being able to help, you know, everyone who needs it. So thank you very much for coming before us this evening.
And I do want to extend a heartfelt thank you because you all did do something four months ago, and you funded PJ's job. And PJ Bell has been, I can't speak enough what he has given to me personally, to the city, and to this program. We have upped our level like I didn't know we could up it, so.
It's because he's a Ward Seven guy.
There you go. And that was the council. You all voted him in, and I just can't thank you enough. It's just been, what a find. You know, I do want to thank PJ personally, yeah. So thank you all.
Thank you, PJ. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tamisley. Okay. So the next section is public comment. Public comment is allowed under the council rules. Each speaker is limited to the subject matter relevant to the evening's agenda and must keep their comments to two minutes or less. Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We have three people signed up and six emails.
Okay.
Let's do the people first. Okay. So Laura Thompson to speak on Paper 205.
If you would please state your name and address, Ms. Thompson.
One second, moment, please. Just... Thompson, and I live at 53 Place Fed Road. My house is adjacent to Roosevelt Park. Roosevelt Park is my neighborhood park and the last environmental benefit of my precinct 5-1. So I'm here tonight to speak about the proposed Order 205-23 sponsored by Councilor Spatafora and Winslow to limit the timeframe of the Finance Committee to conduct review of all costs incurred to date in part and total and to obtain estimates from third-party vendors who have no conflict of interest of both grass field installation and artificial turf installation. The Finance Committee must be allowed to review cost estimates of the items that they have requested, prepared by objective third-party vendors. The current vendor, Hainer Swanson, may be reputable. However, their objectivity may be questioned as the City of Malden has paid them millions of dollars over the years. The ability of the Finance Committee to make meaningful decisions regarding the recommendation of funding of Order 139-23 and Order 140-24, these orders call for a complete analysis of the spend to date and the justification for the allocation of additional monies. These are not quick decisions that should be made foolhardedly. These decisions encompass millions of dollars. The Finance Committee should be given the time and opportunity to conduct the review their committee was set up to do by the city. They should not feel the weight of an impatient council to push them to a decision before they are allowed to reach a decision on their own, with all the documentation research necessary to support such a decision. As a resident of Malden and adjacent neighbor to Roosevelt Park, I can tell you that I have lost confidence in some of the leadership in Malden. We are in a fight to maintain our only living grass space of significant size in my precinct, but we are not alone. I know there are many residents in Malden, in other precincts, in other wards that are also fighting to maintain their living grass spaces. Residents of Malden, we need to work together to protect our living grass space in our local neighborhoods for our neighborhood use too. Passive recreational space should be something that is allocated to every neighborhood, not just some neighborhoods. Okay. Okay. I am happy to share Roosevelt Park with sports organizations, but I also want to preserve it for myself, my children, and their children. I want to, I want the same, I want to tell my grandchildren about when their mom and dad played at Roosevelt Park, just like many residents have shared with me throughout the community.
Candace Julian. If you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Candace Julian. I'm at 5 Ridgewood Road. And I'm here to speak to the resolution, the, I'm not going to get this right in terms of the logistics of like...
Resolve.
The resolve. Thank you. Thank you. Resolve 20123, that's being put forth by Amanda Lindehan and Barbara Murphy. I wanted to give you a context for that, just so you didn't think that this notion of poet laureate came out of the blue. So I'm here to give you a context. I'm also here as the president of Malden Arts. And I wanted, I was pleased that we started with a poem from Tom. That seemed really appropriate to me when you're going to look at, at the idea of a poet laureate. In Malden Arts, when we have been committed to public art, and when we created the COVID Memorial, it suddenly dawned on us, I have to say, that Amanda Gorman, when she gave her inaugural speech, sort of inspired us to think, well, wait a minute. Is there a way that poetry could be public art as well? So the notion of the COVID Memorial, which I hope all of you have seen, is a combination of visual art and poetry. And that was an amazing experience for us. And one of the things that happened there was we had a number of meetings with the artists and the poets. And the Medford poet laureate was remarkable in bringing everybody together. And for those of you that were there for the inauguration of that, his poem, which was the last poem that we did, just moved us to start thinking, why don't, why don't we have a poet laureate? There are a lot of really cool things that a poet laureate can do. So that's what this is about. And it really sort of grew out of, organically out of, starting to appreciate that, that there's a role for someone. And there are lots of very talented people in Malden. So that is our hope, that you will unanimously approve this resolve. And thank you for your attention.
You did that in under two minutes, believe it or not.
I was just talking with you.
Thank you. Stephanie Alberto. Come up and state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Alberto. I live at 409 Bryan Street. I just want to state my opposition to Paper 205-23. We need time, the Finance Committee and the public needs time to discuss this. In the mayor's proposal, he said, I look forward to the public debate, which these papers will generate. There needs to be a public debate. Today, we had Charlie Conifrey come with numbers. That's the first time in four years that we had an answer to a question we asked four years ago of justify your need for more playing time. We've never had hours like that. But the thing is, the Finance Committee brought up more questions because Winslow has said that a turf field can take 1,500 hours. But we were told there that our turf fields are only doing 1,100 hours. What happened to those other 400 hours? And 400 hours over three parks that the city owns is 1,200 hours a year that we're not utilizing on turf fields. So that's a question. Another question is ARPA. Why are we using, why are we not using ARPA funds? Why is this a general fund? These are questions that the city, that the taxpayers are entitled to ask and get answers for. And also having time to come up with a win-win plan and having people whose lives are directly impacted, like Laura, like Bonnie, like Audrey, like Rob, who've come to these meetings because this is their neighborhood park and the last environmental benefit. And the other thing is, the lady who was sitting next to Charlie, she was talking about being proactive. And she also, it came up about Coitamore, I can't ever say that one, the Ward Four Park behind the pool. That one. Why is, who decided that that one is a leisurely park? That was a human decision, okay? So when we talk about environmental justice, we have to talk, like, the literal definition is that we spread out the benefits and we spread out the hazards. So why are we, why is this, and she was talking about being proactive. If we can be proactive about our parks and hours and stuff like that, we could be proactive about where we put things.
Ms. Alberto, you're at over two, two and a half minutes.
Okay. So I'm just saying, taxpayers deserve this conversation, and trying to muzzle us and muzzle the Finance Committee is totalitarian and like a dictatorship. It's not a democracy.
Thank you. And you have some emails to read?
I do. The first one is in regards to Paper 205 from Kathy McDonald. To whom it may concern, as a lifelong resident of Ward Five and taxpayer, I am opposed to putting artificial turf at Roosevelt Park. Many experts have expressed concerns about this artificial turf. Their concerns have fallen on deaf ears. Yet here you are, again, asking for more money, $2.5 million. Are you serious? Sadly, yes. I have listened to many politicians discussing how they want to make Roosevelt Park better. If that's true, please look at what has transpired over many years. One, experts identified a contaminated area on the field. Please note that this was after a school was built on that very area. Two, the area was fenced off. A good portion of the field was deemed dangerous. Three, money was spent, lots of money. Four, contaminated soil remains with a fence around it. I urge you to scrap this plan, cut your losses, clean up the soil, call one of the experts and try natural grass. I thank you for your time, Kathy McDonald. The next one, please add our voices to those wanting natural grass for Roosevelt Park, no plastic turf. Thank you, Diane Chambers and Mark Stewart, Summer Street, Malden. The third one, in regards to the same paper. Dear Malden City Council Finance Committee members, the Friends of Roosevelt Park request the following to be answered before the Finance Committee votes on whether or not to recommend Items 139 and 140 pertaining to additional costs for Roosevelt Park project and the remediation of contaminated soil at the park. One, what is the cost comparison for natural grass and artificial turf? Installation costs, maintenance costs, and the cost to replace and dispose of artificial turf every eight to 10 years. Two, why hasn't an RFP been issued to determine the cost of the natural grass field? Three, why hadn't ARPA funding been designated for cleanup of the contaminated soil? Four, what is the utilization and scheduling plan for this park and other parks across the city of Malden and Pine Banks? Five, has the committee reached out to the Board of Health members? Making a decision on these funding items before the Board of Health has had time to review and deliberate on the health considerations surrounding artificial turf would not be prudent. We are also troubled by the order on the agenda of the City Council, which is meant to force a decision by the Finance Committee on the Roosevelt Park items. We believe the Finance Committee, acting as a financial oversight board, must maintain autonomy in order to carry out this fiduciary duty to act in the best interest of Malden residents and taxpayers. The Finance Committee is obligated to diligently review the details of all funding requests by asking questions, gathering information, and retrieving data from various sources. The order and notice of intent to discharge the Finance Committee is, in our opinion, an overreach of government to disallow the process, and it is an attempt to subdue the important work of the Finance Committee. We requested through FOIA the RFP for a natural grass alternative for Roosevelt Park from OSPCD. The reply to this request was this. The request response, there are no records responsive to your request at this time. Please review these case studies from UMass Tury for natural grass playing field costs to maintain hours of use, and they included three links, which will be attached to the paper. Sincerely yours, Friends of Roosevelt Park, Malden. So this one says, please enter this note and read into the public record, Roosevelt Park, like our other natural parks are jewels in our constantly developing city. Our Finance Committee needs facts concerning long-term costs associated with the current plan of remediation and replacing artificial turf and associated landscaping at Roosevelt Park. Our City Council should not be allowed to intervene in this process. There needs to be analysis of the use of funding packages that have been made public by City Hall's recent proposal. I am strongly against attempts by Councilor Spatafora and Winslow to push through the proposal of installing artificial turf on Roosevelt Park. Respectfully submitted, Len Morello, 134 Dexter Street, Malden. This is in regards to Paper 200. Dear Malden City Council, 200-23, I am writing to request that the City of Malden reverse its decision to abolish text message automated telephone notifications regarding street sweeping, which began on May 1st, 2023. The city has made great strides to have residents sign up for different city notifications via emails, text messages, and automated voice messages, which include street sweeping, yard waste, trash recycling removal, winter parking, snow emergencies, festivals, parade routes, roadwork, et cetera. Flashing automated billboards have been placed throughout the city urging residents to sign up for these important reminders. All appeared to be working well until the strange removal of what is considered by many to be important disappeared. Personally, I very much appreciate and count on these important reminders to help me remember which side of the street to park on so that I don't get a $30 ticket for forgetting to move my car to the proper side of the street. It was great. It was one of the most helpful tools that City of Malden rolled out to actually help residents avoid fines and tickets and to allow the DPW street sweepers to complete their routines without having cars impede their progress in full completion of sweeping the streets. To my complete surprise and dismay, I received a text message, an automated phone call on my cell phone and landline, as well as an email from the city on April 30th, 2023, that without reason, other than residents should write the date on our calendar, that this was helpful tool notification was being discontinued. My question is why? Why put a punitive revenue generating cancellation in place? As a taxpayer and city resident, this makes absolutely zero sense. It looks like a money grab and has extremely poor optics. The hypocrisy of the situation is I can receive four different notifications in one day that yard waste or trash pickup will be delayed a day, which will cost me nothing if I forget, but the one notification that will cost me money if I forget is now being abolished. Did you have input on this? Did the City Council vote on this? Is there a rationale for this? This clearly looks like a misguided revenue generating program designed by someone. What once was a helpful promotion of useful information seemed to arbitrarily disappear with the push of a notification canceled button. I called City Hall, who said the DPW made the decision, and called them. I called the DPW, and they stated they were not involved and that canceling the notifications actually makes their job more difficult, and to call the Parking Department. Okay. Sorry. Thank you for watching my time. This one, yeah, sorry. Oh, my gosh. Hold on one second. Sarah Strickland, 40 Auburn Street.
I think we got the gist of it.
Yeah, okay. And then I have one final public comment on Paper 201 from Christopher Hickey, the group facilitator for the Maldens Writing Collaborative. I'm excited to hear that the City Council is considering the funding and establishment of a Malden poet laureate title. I believe that the council should vote unanimously in favor of such a measure, as our city would be greatly enriched by supporting the local arts community in this way. Having worked firsthand with many poets in our community, they are a viable source of new ideas, of helping to guide us socially, and for bearing witness to the lives lived in our neighborhood. It is very important for a community to have an individual that embodies the voice of poetry and uses that voice to shine a light on all the aspects that make Malden such a special place to live and create art. Please vote in favor of funding and establishing this opportunity, as it will showcase our vibrant arts community and draw more inspired people to make Malden their home. And that's the end of them.
And that was from?
Again, that was from Christopher Hickey of the Malden Writers Collaborative.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Approval of minutes, Paper 189 and 190. Minutes for the meeting of April 25th and minutes for the meeting of May 2nd, 2023.
Councilor Winslow?
Motion to approve.
Yeah. Okay. Councilor McDonald?
I just had a clarification question. On the minutes from April 25th, on page five, Order 23822... 23822, to establish a food policy council. The action of the council stated that we approved the ordinance, but I think the ordinance was changed to a resolve because then we received the communication from the mayor about the administrative policy.
So if you look in the, I'm sorry, can I talk to? So it's, that's only because of the formatting of the software that we're using, but if you look in the meeting minutes, it says this paper was amended in committee to form from an ordinance to a resolve endorsing the mayor's food policy council. And then that's actually what you approved?
But then the following thing says a motion was made that the ordinance be approved.
Right. That's because of the formatting of the software that we use, because this paper was originally put in as an ordinance. And I can try to go and play with that. If you want to make it look that way, I will, I'll work on that, but I did put it in the minutes that it did become a resolve.
That's how I, that's how I knew, is that it was already there.
Okay.
But it didn't match the next line. Is there an ability to override that?
Well, we're going to work on that tomorrow morning, counsel.
I, I would, um, do I need to make a motion about that?
I don't think so. I can handle it.
Okay, thank you.
Make the motion to approve. Minutes as amended? That comment, that not?
All right, so what, so what is the, what is the motion? To approve?
Motion to approve with the minutes and address Mr.
Approve as amended?
Approve. Right, Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor McDonald. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The minutes are approved as amended.
Paper 191-23, "Appointment, mayoral appointment of Kathleen Higgins, 34 Forest Street, to the Disability Commission. Said term to commence upon confirmation by the City Council and to expire September 23, 2025. This appointment is to fulfill the unexpired term of Frank Cena, who passed away."
Motion to confirm? Or do we want to refer?
No, no, refer to license. I'm sorry, refer to personnel and appointments.
Understood. Thank you.
Yes, okay. On Counsel Linnahan's motion to refer to personnel and appointments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Paper's been referred.
Paper 192-23, "Petition, livery, Amrit Singh, 228 Pearl Street, Malden. One vehicle, new. Paper 193-23, "Petition, outdoor parking, Andy Service Center Incorporated, 356 Lebanon Street, 12 spaces, renewal. Paper 194-23, "Petition, outdoor parking, Malden Middlesex Motor Sales, 35 Canal Street, 10 spaces, renewal. 195-23, "Petition, pool tables, Allen Cave Billiard Pool Hall, 94B Pleasant Street, 7 tables, renewal. Paper 196-23, "Petition, secondhand dealer, Great Eastern Vintage, 258 Highland Avenue, renewal." Refer to license.
And Counselor Zika's motion to refer the petitions to license, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The petitions are referred to license.
Paper 197-23, "Be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the City of Malden, 12.08.020 zoning map is hereby amended to better reflect the current uses of the surrounding neighborhood by changing the zoning district from highway business to neighborhood business for the following contiguous parcels: 1038 Main Street, 5 Island Hill Ave., 1100 Main Street, 1128 Main Street."
Counsel O'Malley?
Thank you very much. This is, this is a proposal to reevaluate a small zoning district on the northern portion of Main Street. I would like to move this to both ordinance and a joint ordinance and planning board hearing. Not really seeing any amendments happening in ordinance, but we'll be able to kind of catch up the ordinance committee directly if you have any specific questions. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Counselor Spatafor, one moment.
Are you referring this to just ordinance or?
Ordinance and planning to have a public hearing.
Oh.
Okay, that's I didn't hear. Okay. Well, the reason why you ask, are you going to go to ordinance first because sometimes you want to talk about it, then go to?
Yes.
Because the clock stops, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, Counsel, hold on one second, okay.
You know what I'm saying, Counsel O'Malley, remember, we had this before, we didn't send it to the, to the, to the, if we send it to the planning board in ordinance same time, the clock starts. If it doesn't and you want to debate in an ordinance, you only refer to, refer to ordinance. That's, that's what I didn't hear.
Okay, Counsel O'Malley, and then Counsel Crowe. Oh, did you shut yourself off?
I'm going to support either way, I just didn't know.
So what I was intending was to refer to both locations, because there doesn't, I don't think there's any to be any amendments, because the rules say that it shall be referred within 14 days to a hearing. So, so if there are amendments that could be made, it would have to be before they notice a hearing. But I'd like to refer it to both, but then have the conversation in ordinance before we have the hearing so that we're all on the same page.
I support both of them, I just didn't hear.
Yeah, thank you.
Counsel Crowe, you have your light on. Are you, are you fine?
I'm second, yeah.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion by Counsel O'Malley to refer a paper 197-23 to a joint session of Rules and Ordinance and Planning Board, seconded by Counsel Siminelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Paper has been referred. Next order of business, please.
Paper 198-23, "Be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the City of Malden, 12.12.030 use regulations, is hereby amended to prohibit any new self-storage facilities by striking SP under both I-1 and I-2 and inserting no in their places."
Counsel O'Malley?
Thank you. This, this is inspired by the fact that we've seen a number of storage facilities come up. I know in the past, having reviewed Planning Board hearings and other boards and commissions that, you know, there's been a lot of talk about how many jobs are really created by this. There's some short-term construction jobs, but when we talk about like long-term jobs, there are really not a lot of jobs being created by these facilities. There is a use for them to some degree, but I do think that it is not necessarily something that's really enriching our lives in Malden. I, I do think it also contributes to more of a transit nature, rather than people really feeling like they can grow roots here. It really is more like, you know, just store your stuff. There's definitely a use for them. I think we have a number of them throughout the, the city, so I would like to again refer this to a joint ordinance and planning board hearing to discuss it in more depth.
We have a couple of lights on. Counsel Linnahan?
Oh, I would love to second this and be added as a sponsor. I also just wanted to speak to one of the reasons why, you know, I think this is so important. I obviously hear from a lot of residents about it, as Counsel O'Malley no doubt does as well, but I've been reading a lot about just some of the recent like studies and data on how what you zone for in light industrial areas in particular can affect how your job force, how whether people are allowed to live or are able to afford to live in the community, what kind of uses you can get if you, basically if you put no restrictions on things like big box and self-storage, they end up sort of becoming the default and crowding out other more compelling uses. And so I think there is a trend towards looking at this zoning so that we can get the type of development, whether that's, you know, even like food, art, live work, things like, even setting aside the live work, just aspects of the economy that we maybe are looking to attract more of, things that we might see down on Commercial Street now, that if we wanted to expand that and build more zones like that, a key part of doing that is making sure that we have a handle on things like self-storage. So I just wanted to add that context to it. I was glad to see this on the docket and am very supportive and wanted to thank the sponsor for starting us down this path to discuss.
Thank you, Counsel Linnahan. Counsel Siminelli?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm delighted to see this, and I'd like to be a co-sponsor on this as well, because, you know, I'll tell you, my neighborhood, I think, endures the storage factory the most on the Route 60 corridor for the most part. And, you know, I've been doing a lot of studying on that Route 60 corridor and there's, I had been talking to the mayor about it, and it's early right now, but I'd like to see some development along that corridor. And within that corridor, I got one, two, three, four, and now this other one next to the Dunkin' Donuts will be five. Five huge self-storage containment places within like, I don't know, a couple of football fields or so along the Route 60 corridor. So I brought it to the mayor's attention as well, and I think this is a great paper, and it's, and I like what I hear from Counsel Linnahan, because we do, we have to start looking and taking control and, you know, I'm one of those counselors that have like a vision for their neighborhood. I'm sure everybody else does, but I'm saying like the Route 60 corridor could be a nice mixed use between housing and retail space along that corridor, starting from the 180 apartment complex that has been built. We're looking on a couple of other sites for some more housing development entities and some more mixed uses. So, I mean, again, I think this is a, is a strong, great paper, and I hope all of my colleagues actually support this, because like I said, my, my neighborhood is seriously contaminated by the self-storage use. And again, I, you know, again, self-storage, I mean, they gave us one for, for mitigation for Ward 7, so I appreciate that. But I mean, you know, you got to think bigger than that, and I, I just, and once they're there, they're there. And I just don't think it's a real good look and a real good use for us. And like Counsel O'Malley said, there's, there's no job being had over there, maybe one, possibly two, because I can never find the person that's in my storage containment place anyway. So, you know, I don't even know where the bathroom is, no one can tell me. So, you know, I, I just think that, you know, this is a good, strong paper and, and deserves merit, and it's just not what I want to see running down the, I don't think any of yous do, the Route 60 corridor. That's our, that's our new runway, man. We want to kind of, we want to bring that up, you know, and I've got some visions and I'm sure you all do too, so, yeah, I'm on the paper and I support it. Thank you very much.
Okay, trying to move this paper along, get a lot of lights on here, folks, so if we can kind of, it's something that can be discussed in committee, so if everybody can kind of, Counsel Winslow?
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to be added as co-sponsor. I mean, the one thing I do want to say is that I think as a council, we also have to understand that, I mean, this is just saying no to something, and we really need to do the hard work of saying what we want. We had studies on Commercial Street that never translated into zoning. We have Broadway, which has kind of stalled now that our senior planners left. You know, we also have to do the hard work of actually implementing the master plans. And, and one of the things, you know, now that we have Commercial Street and Broadway for our, and I think the next step is to ask our Office of Strategic and Planning Committee to look at Route 60. I actually, well before I was on the council, I think I'd go back even to 2015, 2013, 2015, when the bike trail was done, I wrote something called Trail Orientated Development that would have taken care of this, but the council at that time didn't have a taste for that. So be happy to reintroduce that paper of so we can get to yes on something rather than just, you know, saying not.
I agree to that.
All right, okay, all right. Well, I'll bring that up next time, Chris.
Yeah, I agree to that. I like that.
Thank you, Counsel Winslow. Counsel Spatafor?
Yeah, I, I will absolutely support this. A couple of things I do want to point out, I believe this, you know, Counsel Crowe and myself actually fought one where the, the old Malden news was, they wanted to put a five-story facility there. But I think the dig and debate, which a couple of councils touched upon, this, this is, these, these, these buildings are not placed here by accident, right? They are cash cows. They make more money than hotel rooms because they're monthly payments, but it's because of the type of housing we've allowed to come here. And I know we're debating about housing, but for me personally, I think we should have more ownership, more affordable ownership, and they come here because they know there's an ample amount of apartments, it's a transit community. I think, you know, I have, I have five people in my family, my house is full. I can't imagine having a family in a small apartment. That's why they thrive on those consumers to pay those high exorbitant monthly fees. So this is really just not only saying no to these types of developments, but I really think we need to challenge when we're doing these exercises on residential to really force our hand into doing ownership.
I agree.
That's who I really believe this comes down to.
I agree.
And I know this is a hot topic debate right now, but they all go hand in hand. So I fully support this paper. Thank you.
I like that, too.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel Conan?
Thank you, Madam President. I was involved with-
Did you shut yourself, you shut yourself off? Hold on a second.
No, don't touch it.
There you go. Don't touch.
I was involved with Counsel Crowe when they tried to sell us on that five-story, that five-story storage facility. And in non-certain terms, we told them we didn't want you there, because it was like three people going to run the place.
Right.
Tax dollars are not what they should be, get in charge of the warehouse rate. So I'm looking forward to supporting Counsel O'Malley on this.
Perfect. Thank you, Counsel Conan. Counselor, hold on one second. Counsel Hayes, hold on Hayes.
Thank you. I'll be short. I want to support. Thank you for putting the paper together, and if I could be added as a sponsor, that would be great, and I do agree that we need to start following our master plans and also like our open space plans, all of our plans really, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. And Counsel Siminelli?
I'm sorry.
Just so you know, two, two of them are in, they're not all in Ward 7. Yeah, no. Counsel, Counsel Crowe has you hauled down the first one in Ward 1, then I have you haul coming up next, then you and I share the next one, and then you have the one after that. So it's not just Ward 7.
Listen, Madam, Madam President, Madam President, I'm saying the corridor, I'm just saying the corridor of Route 60. We're all in this thing together. I think we all kind of say the same thing, you know?
So.
We're taking over, anyway.
I know. All right. So on Counselor O'Malley's motion to send to, we want to do ordinance and planning board again, votes, seconded by Counsel Linnahan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, were you one? Counsel McDonald, I'm sorry. Would you like to speak, Counsel McDonald?
It'd be good.
There you go. Wait a minute, you just went off again. Hold on a second.
Just go the other way.
I, I was just feeling left out, so I-
Okay, all right.
I'm excited to support this paper, would like to be added as a sponsor, thank you.
All right, thank you. So on Counselor O'Malley's motion to refer to a joint plan, a joint planning and ordinance committees, seconded by Counsel Linnahan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Paper has been, paper has been referred. Counsel O'Malley, your light is back on for a moment. Clerk, if you read the next order of business, please.
Paper 199-23, "Order that the city solicitor provide a written opinion on the validity of the charter review process currently being undertaken by the City Council in light of the charter commission process defined by MGL Chapter 43B."
Counsel O'Malley, your light's on.
I went from the most popular person in the room to the least popular person in the room pretty quickly. That was like a roller coaster. So, yeah, I'm, I don't want there to be like fireworks, I just want to make sure that like what we're doing is correct, you know? We've, we've talked about the charter review process. I've kind of been the advocate for preservation of the, the old charter, and I just want to make sure that what we're doing, we dot our i's and cross our t's to make sure that what we end up doing is, is, is going to be legally binding and upheld. I understand it could be controversial, so I'm not going to make any motions. I'd like to hear a conversation. Thank you. Please be kind.
Counsel Winslow?
You know, we have our legal counsel here tonight. I don't know if there's a, they can answer this quickly without having to write, I don't know, Zahir? Zahir?
Zahir?
Zahir, I don't know if you know of the, I don't know if you know of the, the, the order that we're talking about on the 200, who else would, 1 in, 1 in 923? I didn't know if you had a chance to review that, if there's any thoughts from the legal office tonight, or would you just prefer to respond in writing?
So we'll be happy to respond in writing. Zahir Simi, Assistant City Solicitor. So there's basically two options, or two routes to amend a charter. One is by special act of the legislature, and the other is by a local charter commission. The local charter commission option is more involved and it requires electing a charter commission, and the whole process takes anywhere up to 18 to 24 months. The special act of the legislature is sort of more along the lines of what the council has been doing. It's basically appointing a committee to study the question, and then once a new charter is more or less in final form, submitting it to the legislature to be approved, and then the legislature will typically approve it contingent on the local voters first approving it. So we can certainly give you a more formal, you know, written explanation of the charter amendment or new charter establishment process, but those are basically the two general ways to amend or create a new local charter.
I guess the question which I'm hearing from Counsel O'Malley at the moment is, but I guess, is it our choice to pick which direction we choose to go in?
Well, yes, you have, I mean, you have to pick a choice. I mean, by default, it seems like, I mean, you haven't elected a charter commission, and, you know, that you could, if you wanted to, start that process. And, you know, we could certainly give you, you know, a memo or an opinion as to what the procedures are, you know, to do that. But it's not, it's not the only way, there's another...
That, well, may I keep this on the answer? I believe that depending on what we were told early on in the discussion was depending on the type of change that we were making to the charter, when it got to the legislature, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Sahir, that the legislature at that point would decide whether it was okay to move forward, or whether it was such a substantive change, that they would recommend it go to the voters for a vote by the general public. That was my understanding of what was explained to us in the beginning. Yes?
So, I think, I think we've heard the opinion, I mean, I'm okay with what we've heard, if it is helpful to displace on file, that works, but I see Counsel Seeca has her light on, so I don't want to stifle.
Counsel Seeca.
If you're fine, I'm fine. I was just going to suggest that Mark Rumley from the city solicitor's office, he has actually had some experience with this when he did it in Medford, so if you wanted a written, you know, answer, then maybe he might be the one to, that can tell us what it is Medford did to do this same exact process. So, that was just...
Yeah, I mean, if...
If you're good with what Sahir told you, then I'm good with it, but...
I'll leave it up to the council.
Maybe, maybe just have, maybe you could just, to further your answer, have a conversation with...
Mark from the solicitor's office, and he'll, he'll confirm, I'm assuming, confirm what Sahir is saying.
Feel free to just drop by, or, you know, send us an email, and we'll be happy to discuss with you.
Place of file.
Place on file.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. We didn't have a second of the motion on the floor. Okay, so...
Counsel Mark. I don't know what it's personal thing, but I'm just...
I'm in.
You've got to get the light on quicker, Counsel McDonald.
I have the light on.
It doesn't show up on delayed, it's on a delayed pause here. Counsel McDonald.
Yeah, just very quickly, I would welcome some kind of just overview written, or otherwise, maybe something exists that can be pointed to about the limitations of this process. Like, I was just looking up the Mass General Law Section right now, and it looks like only under a charter commission can we propose, can changes be proposed to a legislative body. Like, that wasn't something, I don't know if I'm reading that correctly or not, but that wasn't something that I was aware was a limitation of our process. It's not necessarily something we've been talking about anyways, but it would be helpful to know if there are other kinds of, like, boundaries of what is in bounds or not, and so I don't need an answer about that tonight, but I'm just saying, I would welcome something that's a little more of a written overview, or something you could point us to, or the legal department could point us to, and I'm happy to second the motion to place the order on file.
Yeah, we're happy to do that. I'm sure there, we can provide some good summaries of the different, you know, two avenues of creating a new charter. There are probably already, you know, existing good summaries that we could find and provide you, and if that's good enough for you, that, you know, you can rely on that, or if you want to follow up with us with more detailed questions, you know, we're happy to, happy to talk to you.
That sounds like a great place to start, thank you.
Okay. Please on file.
So, on Counsel O'Malley's motion to place on file, seconded by Counsel Simonelli, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Papers placed on file. Next order of business, please.
Paper 201-23, resolve that it is the sense of the city council that the city of Malden explore options to restore street sweeping notifications and other notifications that help improve the quality of life for our residents.
O'Malley.
So, can you tell, I finished my exams today? I was just informed by Counsel Seeca that I believe that they have turned them back on?
They, yes. They moved them last week.
All right, so, great news, we've confirmed that they have turned the notifications back on. I do want to thank Sarah Strickland. Sarah, she wrote the public comment earlier, is a resident of Ward Four, so you do know where this was inspired from, and, you know, I do appreciate that the city is going to turn them back on. I think it's a great decision. So, I would move to place this on file since it's a moot point.
On Counsel O'Malley's motion... All those in favor?
Aye.
Papers placed on file, please.
Paper 201-23, resolve that it is the sense of the city council that they wish to support the establishment of a poet laureate program in Malden, and work with the Malden Mayor's Office and Malden Arts to move this initiative forward. It is further the sense of the city council that this program shall encourage and highlight the art of poetry and the written word, educate and entertain people of all ages, and expand access to literature and literary arts across the community. The poet laureate shall be the official city poet and will serve as an arts ambassador, reading poetry at ceremonial events and cultural occasions, and illuminating not only their own work, but the work of other writers in reflection of our diverse community.
Could you please read the mayor's letter?
Yes. Dear members of the city council...
Excuse me, my mic was off when I said that this is a letter from the mayor to the city council, sorry.
I write to ask for your support in a new program I would like to initiate that establishes Malden's first-ever poet laureate. As with most, if not all, good ideas, when it comes to the arts in our community, this initiative caught me, came to me through Malden Arts. A poet laureate would promote literacy and literature among city residents of all ages. This person would also complement all the good work being done by Malden Reads as well. Like cities and towns around us, such as Medford and Arlington, we envision this role to read poems at ceremonial events, promote the art of poetry, attend literary and cultural events, and provide public readings and workshops throughout the community. My plan in moving forward in this initiative, moving this initiative forward, is to work with Malden Arts to review applications and to select a finalist to take on the role. The plan is to include a representative of the city council to participate in this process. The hope is that the person will serve a two-year term with an annual stipend of $2,500, of which we will fund out of the mayor's office professional services account. I have seen firsthand the positive impact Medford's first poet laureate, Terry Carter, had on the community, and I believe the same will happen here. Terry recently made an appearance at the gallery at 57, and it was standing room only. City councilors Barbara Murphy and Amanda Linehan are sponsoring a resolution that is on the docket, and we would ask for your support. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Gary Christensen, Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Linehan?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for joining me in sponsoring this resolution. So, as our Ward Three's wonderful resident, Candace Julian, shared during public comment, this has been a passion project of hers and Malden Arts, but I really do want to give her credit for doing the homework and finding a way to bring a proposal to the mayor and myself, that we could kind of workshop and bring in and try to find a way to make a good fit for Malden. Like Candace, I've seen the Medford poet laureate at various events, and been really, really impressed, and I think, you know, more importantly, this is a community of artists, our artists are already living here and working here, and I think this is a way that we can leverage their creative expertise to highlight the cultural assets in the community. There's so much more than just reading poems at events, although that is a major part of what a laureate does. I think that there's, the potential here is limitless, and so I'm very excited about it, would love to have my colleagues' support. I think this is a great thing that Malden is overdue in having, but no time like the present to add, and I'm excited to see it potentially happen.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. Counsel Winslow.
I mean, I really like this idea. I know it's so great to hear, I mean, just had we had Counsel Linehan tonight, poetry, sometimes it's an overlooked art, and by interjecting in their community, it really broadens people's perspective. I would actually like to offer a friendly amendment, because I know in my ward, there's a great storyteller. So, I would like to have it to be both a poet and a storyteller laureate, so that we can be expansive. So, that's the, that would be my suggestion, that we, not necessarily limited to poets, but we have some great storytellers as well, and that it is a way to, poems and stories are a way. So, that would be my suggestion, or we could, I could take that up with Malden Arts, but I don't know if we'll have, we would have both a poet laureate and a storyteller laureate, but I think it's the same type of, kind of thing, of really, you know, so, yeah.
I don't know why there...
Okay, so, all right.
Counsel Cologne Hayes, while we think about this for a minute.
Yeah, it's okay. I was just going to say, please add me as a sponsor, I love this idea, it's fantastic. I've seen Medford's poet laureate many times, and if I can respond to Counsel Winslow's friendly amendment, I'm, I think I'm going to disagree that a poet and a storyteller are the same thing. So, I don't think that you can combine them, but if you wanted to put up a proposal to have another, especially since there's a stipend involved here, maybe a separate motion or something, but I don't think you combine a storyteller and a poet laureate. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cologne Hayes. Counsel O'Malley.
You know, I never really thought of a poet laureate and what it meant. Like, this is the first time I'm like pondering, like, what a poet laureate is, and Counsel Winslow, you threw us a curveball with the story.
I know you're storyteller, too.
I like, I like the initiative that Counsel Winslow is going for. I just don't, I don't want to muddy the waters too much, I think that, you know, there's a vision here, and I think that maybe one of the things we can say is, it would be great if a poet laureate would do some storytelling occasionally, but I do think storytelling is really important, you know, stargazing and storytelling with Malden Arts, and MATV and Malden Reads. Fully looking to support, I'd love to be a co-sponsor and learn more about what it means to be a poet laureate. I have not met the poet laureate from Medford. I look forward to it.
Awesome. Counsel Linehan, did you want to come back on again?
I just wanted to respond to the amendment.
Counsel Linehan?
So, I'm neither a poet nor a trained storyteller, but my sense is that they are two very different creative disciplines. It was actually putting me back in the frame of mind, I don't know if anybody remembers when there was the art space at 16 Gallery that Santee had, and she used to, back in the day, used to do like poetry slams and storytelling, and they were two different things. That was my main exposure, actually, to storytelling, was like coming to those in Malden. Both very impressive, but I, my sense is that they're different, and when I don't know, I feel like the right thing to do is to go back to the community and ask what the right thing to do is. So, I think my feeling here would be to keep it as is, and maybe get that feedback and find a way to incorporate, if we would like elements of storytelling as a discipline to be included in some of the events, if that is a complementary skill set, or if it's something that we could incorporate as we evaluate the potential applicants here, maybe that's the right way to handle it, but I don't know that I want to edit the resolve as it's written, but good food for thought to consider something additional that we could bring to the table as we move into these interviews.
Okay. Counsel McDonald, because I see his name this time.
Thank you for your recognition, Madam Counsel President. I just wanted to note that I Googled storyteller laureate, and ended up down a rabbit hole about citywide chief storytellers, which is a trend, so I would just...
Chief storyteller.
Chief storytellers, which I think comes from like brand marketing, but is a little bit different, but I, so I just want to say, you know, we could also have a storyteller in chief, I guess. And so, I'm happy to support the original, you know, defer this amendment, support the original text, and just wanted to thank Counsel Linehan for helping to bring this forward, and asked to be added as a co-sponsor. I think this is wonderful, thank you.
Counsel Winslow, are you willing to withdraw?
I would withdraw, but a storyteller in chief as well.
Okay, so, so we have, and just from the chair, I'm very excited about this, too. I think it's a wonderful opportunity. There's so many young people who do write poetry, just on, you know, the side of their notebook, et cetera, so I think it'll be wonderful for our community to actually show that we're embracing this, and hopefully they will bring some of the youth forward and be able to share some of their works with us, so, this is great. So, we have a motion by Counsel Linehan, seconded by Counsel Cologne Hayes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so all of us passed. Next order of business, please.
Paper 202-23, resolve that it is the sense of the city council that they wish to invite representatives from the Malden's People Budget, People's Budget, to present the results from their 2023 survey during the Committee of the Whole Meeting of May 16, 2023. Be it further noted that the sponsor of this resolve will seek a vote on a motion to suspend docket rules per Council Rule 1.03 for the purpose of achieving this presentation.
Is it my turn?
Yes. Counsel McDonald.
Thank you. The Malden People's Budget is a community working group that has done, this is the third year that they've done their community survey, and they asked to come and present to us, and so, in talking with the council president, I think next week would be the best week to, we had a presentation today, but they'll be able to give us a summary of their findings for this year as we enter into the FY '24 budget process. So, I, and the advice of the clerk included some additional language here to clarify how this will work. I know we've done this in the past, have some of these presentations on Committee of the Whole nights, but just for extra clarity about intent here. So, I ask for your support in hearing from this community group next week. Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. We have one more. Who is?
That would be, I was...
Oh, okay. Okay. You know, I think, you know, as we move forward, and we want to hear from folks using the Committee of the Whole night, because our schedule is so packed for the rest of the year, that it's a great way to be able to kind of get in a few more things that we wouldn't be able to fit in if we're just limited to, you know, Committee of the Whole, I mean, full council night, so I'm in full support of this. So, we have a motion by Counsel McDonald to suspend...
No, I don't, I just think I need, we need a motion approved.
We're just approving the resolve right now.
Oh, we're just approving the res...
Yeah.
To pass the resolve, seconded by Counsel Spatafora. All those in favor?
I think Counsel Spatafora made the motion, I think Counsel Cologne Hayes seconded. Either way.
Okay. On Counsel Spatafora's motion to pass the resolve, seconded by Counsel Cologne Hayes, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The resolve is passed. Next order of business, please.
Paper 135-23, this is an enrolled ordinance. Be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the Code of the City of Malden, 2.16.005 Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees, is hereby amended.
On Counsel McDonald... Counsel Crowe's motion to ordain, seconded by Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we have ordained, yes, we have ordained the ordinance. Okay, next order of business, please.
Paper 203-23, commit...
I don't think you actually do. I don't think you technically do. No? We did it last week, and needed to do it the whole week, but you kept telling me we didn't need to.
I can do it if you want me to, I expected you to ask me that.
I know, I didn't think it was last week. Last week you were telling me I didn't need to do it.
Then we're moving on.
All right. From now on, we're going to do it. I just thought we always called a roll. You only need a roll call if it's a zoning ordinance, if it's a regular ordinance, you just need a majority vote. Okay. All right. It's fine. It's a majority vote.
All right. Next order of business, please.
Paper 203-23, committee report, the Standing Committee on Personnel and Appointments, to whom was referred Paper 119, series of 2023. Having considered the same, make the following report that this appointment be recommended out favorably to the full council.
On Counsel Linehan's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The committee report is received, clerk will read the paper.
Paper 119-23, mayoral appointment, Kristen Holmeyer, 51 Concord Street, number 27, as a member of the Conservation Commission, said term to expire on February 7, 2025, to replace Khalil Kabah, who stepped down at the completion of his term due to moving out of the city.
Counsel Linehan for the paper. Counsel Linehan for the paper.
Thank you. Personal Committee met last week. We had a delightful interview with Kristin. She brings a wealth of experience and energy around environmental planning and science, has been involved in the community, is really excited about the potential to join the Conservation Commission. We also spoke to her about potentially representing the ConCom on the CPC, which I know is a really critical vacancy right now. And she's sort of miraculously interested in all of these things. And I think we would be very lucky to have her. So with the unanimous support of the committee, we recommended her appointment favorably.
So on Counsel Linehan's motion to confirm the appointment, seconded by Counselor Condon, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The appointment has been confirmed. Next order of business, please.
Paper 204-23, Committee Report. The Standing Committee on Finance, to whom was referred Papers 174, 175, 176, and 177, series of 2023. Having considered the same, make the following report. Committee recommends that these papers out favorably to the full council.
On Counselor McDonald's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Committee report is received. Counsel and Mc-, oh, actually, Clerk, if you would please read the paper.
First paper is 174-23, Order that the sum of $3 million is appropriated to pay cost of street reconstruction, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7.1 of the General Laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority into issue bonds or notes of the city therefore.
Counselor McDonald for the committee.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a great conversation in the Finance Committee last week about these two papers. And I think everyone agrees how important it is and how much our residents value getting ahead on road construction, sidewalk repair. So there's a lot of appreciation for that. There's some really good strategic work that has gone into these papers that I just want to highlight. The first is that we heard about how there's, you know, at this point, a weekly meeting across the Engineering Department, the Department of Public Works, Water, our Tree Warden, and then going back and forth with representatives from National Grid and our utility companies to make sure that we are staying on track, optimizing how all of these different projects and streams of funding weave together. That helps us optimize when we know that there'll need to be, you know, underground repairs on X, Y, and Z street. Then we can shift around the construction calendar to make sure that then we're maximizing what we get in terms of repaving from National Grid, et cetera. I really appreciate that the Tree Warden was there, talking about how to maximize the number of tree pits on sidewalks that were getting reconstructed. So there's a lot of good coordination right now that has been built up in the last few years that's happening, just on a weekly basis. Additionally, the Engineering Department commissioned a pavement condition assessment, which means someone has to go out and look at all of the conditions of all of the public roads in Malden, of which there's just under 100 miles, and gave us a whole report about the conditions of our roads, which I'm proud to say are substantially better than Medford's. And who did a similar result, did a similar assessment a few years ago, and they got like in the 40s. And ours was in like low 70s and out of 100-point scale. And really, this, we think, has, has gone up because of the invest, the increased investment that the city's been making. And so there was a lot of support for continuing that investment to be able to push it up even further. One of the important points about looking at street paving and maintenance, depending on the condition of the roads, you have to do more work. So if the road just needs some patching, if you patch it quickly, not too bad. The worse it gets, well, maybe you can, you know, pull the surface off and re-mill it. That's a little bit more, but it's not the full reconstruction of the road, which is even more money. And so the, you know, the ability to stay on top of the maintenance, to get ahead of the backlog, is how we keep the streets in decent condition. So this is a substantial investment to push us further in that direction. And I just appreciate being able to see all that laid out. So we have two pieces of the, of the package. One is to bond and one is of available free cash. And the city, the CFO, you know, let us know, they'll delay the bonding as long as they can. They'll start with the free cash, but want, but also showed us the, the debt payback calendar to show how this would fit in while still being able to keep our payments decreasing over time. So we had a great conversation and had unanimous support. I'm sure my colleagues have some other things to say. But certainly, as a council at large, I appreciate the strategic citywide view of our road paving and construction and the hard work of the City Engineers Office in trying to optimize how to best use these resources to raise the overall condition of the streets in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McDonald. Counsel Simonelli.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, just want to say, well said, Counsel McDonald. And I, you know, early on, when Counsel Murphy became council president, she had asked me to sit in on these meetings and represent the council because I'm on the chairman of the DPW Committee. So she figured that it'd be a good start there. And I got to tell you, you know, I was very impressed. I said this in the subcommittee meeting. You know, they have a, the mayor's office has put a 10, 10-year plan together along with all of the people that you have mentioned. There's so many. Chuck Branigan, he's, he's also in there on those meetings. And Wayne Martinow and the coordination that's going on in there. I got to tell you, I, I was impressed. And I think some of you, a lot, all of you must know me by now. And, you know, it takes a lot to impress me sometimes. And I'll tell you, you know, I, they, they really welcomed me in, explained the, the way it's done. And, you know, like I said, they have a 10-year plan. And these things happen with the cost factor because, you know, there's change orders, unforeseen circumstances that go on, you know. And it, and sometimes it's even frustrating when you've gotten done with a, when you got done with a street and it's finally done, and all of a sudden, you know, something blows underground that's, that you, we didn't see. So, you know, I think that you all should probably sit in on one of those meetings up there. And I, I think you'll be very impressed on the way they're doing things. And I'm going to tell you something, you know, the mayor's office, and the mayor particularly, he really does care about the city, the state of the city's sidewalks and, and street repair. Because you can see it if you just go to one of those meetings. Thank you very much. And thank you for putting me on that, Madam President.
You're very welcome. Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, no, I want to give my wholehearted support to this, both the $3 million in free cash and the $3 billion, $3 million in, in bonding that's coming together here to make this happen. You know, I remember about 10 years, I mean, 10 years ago, and having worked with Somerville and seeing how Gloucester was doing things. And, you know, if you remember 10 years ago, we, you know, the City Council had actually stepped up and spent a lot of money, and it was chaos. And a lot of streets were dug up and sidewalks were dug up and nothing was happening. Even that investment. And, I mean, I, I think it's, we've come a long way. I mean, it's good to see that report that came in that we were 70, going higher. This will get us to a higher level. So great credit to Yemlip. I mean, he's been a key person and Bob Knox and all that great, you know, coordination that's happening with the complexity. I mean, it's, people ask like, what's the next street? But there's, you know, a lot of factors that makes, go into making a good decision. And I appreciate it was really well presented. And, you know, looking forward to this. As someone who spent the afternoon up at Baird Street, talking to someone about wanting to do improvements over there, we, we, we talked about the great work that happened up on, you know, beach view terrace. Beach view because of the work of adding a sidewalk and dealing with a really bad street. So I'm looking forward more to that. We, we have really made a lot of progress over this 10 years and looking forward to the next 10-year plan to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Winslow. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to directly, again, thank Engineer Lip. One of the reasons why we're able to do so much of these roads is because he's personally with his team doing a lot of the engineering work and saving us a lot of money. And that is, that is huge. And I do thank you personally and professionally and your entire team for that. Rome wasn't built in a day. Neither was Malden. We have very old infrastructure. So doing it methodically, getting the gas company to do their gas lines, as Counsel Condon was saying, and finance, having our water mains redone, doing the lead lines. We haven't even approached the electrical system. I have, I just started thinking about that. I was like, you know, I wonder how old our electrical lines are. And on some streets like Malden, those are underground, too. So, you know, it takes, the sewer system, storm drains. It does take a lot of pre-work underground before we can repave it. And so as Counsel Winslow said, you know, the City Council was quite proactive and there were a lot of open roads. I think a lot of open roads are a good sign. I do think that it is, it does benefit waiting because the worst, the worst call you can ever get from a resident is after their road has been repaved and a week later, they open it up again. I think Counsel Spatafora, you've said that many times over the years. So I do think it makes sense to take time, and this is great to get these roads complete. Thank you to the mayor's team and Mr. Lip.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Condon.
Thank you, Madam President. It was never like it is now. They work so hard to coordinate things, to make sure that streets are done the right way, that the gas line is in before we start paving, so they don't have to come back and reopen up the streets. It all, it's not a perfect science, but the effort and the coordination, the cooperation from National Grid has been tremendous. The turnaround over the last six, seven years has been tremendous, and it's been very successful. So everybody involved deserves a round of applause, as far as I'm concerned. They do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Condon. Counsel Spatafora.
Yeah, I think everybody did a good job summarizing. I would just say, you know, the, what we're witnessing now is a combination of a lot of things, which a lot of councils said, but I, I don't think it's luck, right? I think this was done with a methodical thought process over years. Being a council here under the past administration, I don't want to put any ill will to them, but it was an afterthought to fix the water and sewer lines. And it's all about timing and when you have the resources, right? But there's been a conscious effort by this council and this administration, you know, and a mandate to fix the, some of the water lines. But that also came in with the focus and, and, and opening the checkbook and borrowing money to do what we're doing now. I think Counsel Condon quite eloquently said it's communication, communication, both with internal and external staffing. But I do agree with Counsel O'Malley, you know, Rome wasn't built today. And there was a billboard when they did the big did, because if it was, we would have hired their contractor. It was the famous billboard they had. But I think a lot of residents have to realize, they've seen a lot of change in the roads and sidewalks, like Counsel O'Malley, but there's still a lot, excuse me, Counsel McDonald said, there's still a lot left. But I think we're finally chipping away, and if we can keep the maintenance up, we won't have to go back and do those deep, deep reconstruction on those roads. So fully support this in, in the future endeavors. Thank you.
Counsel McDonald, you do like to go last.
Just one really great piece of information from this pavement condition assessment survey that I forgot to share is that they put the total price tag of bringing all Malden streets up to excellent condition at $35 million today. And so that just gives you a sense of scale, like $6 million, that's 15, 17%, right? So that bites off a big chunk of it. But I don't know that we will ever get to all excellent condition roads necessarily. But I just wanted to give folks a sense of scale. And appreciate the points about lead, the lead, the lead service line removal is also a part of that strategy. Thanks to folks for-
And from the chair, I just want to, once again, just reiterate what everyone has said and thank all the departments involved. It really is, has been a coordinated effort. And just driving through Malden is a pleasure these days. Many of the main roads have been done. You know, there's been a lot of focus on the main roads and then kind of working out just some of the smaller roads. And I think when you leave Malden, you see the difference in neighboring cities and towns. So it's good to be in Malden. So with, with that, yes, on, on Counsel McDonald's motion to adopt the order, seconded by Counsel O'Malley, Clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel Condon.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel Seika.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Spatafora.
Yes.
Counsel Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President Murphy.
Yes, the order is adopted. You would read the next paper, Clerk, please.
Paper 175-23, Order that the sum of $3 million is appropriated from available general fund free cash to pay for costs associated with street and sidewalk reconstruction.
Counselor McDonald for the paper.
Move to approve the order.
On Counsel McDonald's motion to adopt the order, seconded by Counsel Condon. The Clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel Condon.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel Seika.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Spatafora. Counsel Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President Murphy.
Yes, the order has been adopted. Next order of business, please.
Paper 176-23, Order that the appropriation enumerated below, being in the amount of $300,000, be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act Fund for the following project, Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Counsel McDonald for the committee.
So we had two proposals from the Community Preservation Commission, this one and the following one, had quick discussion. There was a lot of approval and, and, and support and appreciation. So this is a, this is a one-year collaboration between the CPC and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The CPC has a required spend on housing initiatives. And so this represents the reserve that they built up when those projects haven't been forthcoming, that they will then turn over to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, who specializes in being able to leverage larger projects with their reserve. And so they put some stipulations and requirements on that to focus on certain types of affordability and certain income thresholds. And I think we were all, a number of us supported the CPC at the time they were making this decision. So we're glad to see this come through and, and are supportive of this paper.
On Counsel McDonald's motion to adopt the order, seconded by Counsel Condon, the Clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel Condon.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel Seika.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Spatafora.
Yes.
Counsel Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President Murphy.
Yes, the order has been adopted. Next order of business, please.
Paper 177-23, Order that the appropriation enumerated below, being in the amount of $160,000, be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act Fund for the following project, Tracton Park Improvement Project Phase II Construction.
Counsel McDonald.
I want to know if Counsel Winslow would prefer to comment.
Counsel Winslow? One second, let me get your light on.
Yeah, so this is to complement the funding that the mayor has dedicated a million dollars in ARPA funds for Tracton Park. You know, as costs have escalated, we've, we've had to look in at the master plan. And, you know, I did some work to try to sort out things that were essential to the next phase of the project, which are reworking the dog park, the court area, and the ball field. These were some items that people really want. But you, right now, they're at alternates in sort of, as we're building the package. So it's the type of thing where I heard very clearly from folks for the dog park, they really want to have a, a dog watering area. So that's one of the things that caught, is costly. Wanting to have the full complement of benches, both outside the, in the, in the park as well as in the, the dog park and in the court area. And so this was just an additional thing. And the, and the, also, the CPC then, in the process, suggested that, looking to see, we're, we're replacing some lighting there. They suggested maybe we replace some of that with solar lights. So that's, that was another, we, I actually started out with a $100,000 request. They actually added some money. There's also some, the water work is involving the wall out there. It's actually a nice WPA wall. And so we're, right now, there's just one spot that got filled in with concrete. So we're planning to bring the water line through that area, but then restore it to more of the historical character. So those are the type of things, all the type of things. We've had six community meetings. This will just really help achieve the full vision that came out of our master plan in those meetings. And so that's, that's really the gist of it. And so just looking forward, we're at 50% design, looking to get out to bid by the end of, you know, hopefully by the end of May. And so we, we really need to have the money in place so we can finalize the bid package. So I appreciate the support of everybody for this. It's a wonderful thing and looking forward to seeing a great Tracton Park happen. Thank you.
Counsel O'Malley. Whoop, wait a second. Counsel. There you go.
Thank you, Madam President. Fully in support. I would just second Counsel Winslow's motion, or whoever's motion it is. You know, I think that-
You know, I think that there's been a lot of investment in Malden's parks. And that's been a great part of the CPA, our Community Development Block grant, now with ARPA. So I know that we are really on track to have some of the best parks in, in the Commonwealth. And it's been a great part of being up here on the city council with all of y'all. I love parks. You know, y'all know I'm a former park ranger, so it really is near and dear to my heart. And I can't wait to see the finished product at Trafton. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Winslow's motion to adopt the order, seconded by Counselor O'Malley, clerk will call the roll, please.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Sika. Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Spatafora. Counselor Winslow. Counsel President Murphy.
Yes, the order has been adopted. Next order of business, please.
Paper 205-23, Order Counselors Winslow And Spatafora Will Introduce A Notice Of Intent Via A Motion That The Finance Committee Prepare And Submit Its Final Reports Of Papers 139 And 140 Series Of 2023 By May 17, 2023 For Inclusion And Consideration At The Council Meeting On May 23, 2023. And in the event that the Finance Committee fails to do so, Counselors Winslow And Spatafora will introduce a motion at the May 23, 2023 City Council Meeting To Discharge The Finance Committee From Further Consideration Of Such Papers So That The Council May Consider Those Papers At Its Meeting Of May 23, 2023.
Counselor Winslow for the paper.
So I'd first like to make the motion that, that the council, I make a motion that the council set a timeline for the Finance Committee To Prepare And Submit Its Final Reports Of Papers 139 And 140 Series Of 2023 By May 17, 2023 For Inclusion And Consideration At The Council Meeting On May 23, 2023. So I, I make that, that motion, so.
Seconded by counsel.
So just to explain, you know, we have under our rules that all finance papers get referred to the Finance Committee. And, and in any committee, we, we make that as a habit. We, we don't typically set timelines. So, but Robert's Rules does allow the city council to establish timelines. And this is the process that's set forth in Robert Rules, that if the, the council as the whole wants to set a timeline, it gives fair notice to the Finance Committee through this notice of intent and, and to have the timeline. And so that way, the Finance Committee can, you know, have that time. I mean, the paper that was referred to the mayor here came to the council on March 30. I appreciate Finance Chair McDonald scheduled things on a good basis and gave enough time for the city staff to prepare and, and now respond. I've been at the Finance Committee meetings. I was very concerned at the last Finance Committee meeting where there were proposals that were very onerous to staff, and I think really very much outside the order of what anything I've seen in terms of thinking that we should ask staff to try to get three quotes for a project that's not even part of the papers. These are papers about a turf field, not about a grass field. So to be asking our staff to go out to find independent councils, to find three of them, to find quotes, I think that's just onerous and really kind of beyond what we ever asked. I mean, we just voted on $6 million of, you know, free cash and bonding for roads. We had a very good discussion in Finance Committee on a very complicated thing. We just voted on that. I appreciate this as a controversial thing, but I, I do think that, you know, we're giving enough time for the Finance Committee to have a fair deliberation. And, you know, it was a good meeting tonight, getting the information from, you know, Charlie Conifree and Laura with our rec department on the hours, which was a good question. Now, Counselor Hayes was very much focused on that, some data. You know, Hayner Swanson provided some more information on that. I mean, I think, you know, it's interesting, I mentioned that Hayner Swanson was a key player in helping us resolve all that problem we had with the $50 million spending on a road. So they, they've been a trustworthy consultant for the city. So I think that to really question their, that is, you know, like I say, I think it's the Finance Committee asking fair questions and getting those response. But, you know, we know this is controversy. This project's been under scrutiny for four years. We've had numerous public meetings and public processes. We voted last year on bonding, a $1.2 million CDBG bond. We've had numerous things. So I think, you know, I'm, I'm also concerned that, you know, we have the budget season coming up. And so, I feel it's, it's about time that, you know, we're giving the Finance Committee a fair time to do, do diligence. But it also, you know, we, we need to, need to make a decision. We, it's inherent, you know, there's no amount of information that we can have on and make a perfect decision. There's always some judgment, and I, I think it's, it's time to move ahead. So that's why we're putting it here, and the Finance Committee has the opportunity to make meet next week and talk about the information it couldn't talk about this week. And so, I, that's, that's why I'm proposing this motion that we set a timeline. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. Counselor Hayes. One second, Counselor. Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you. So I will not be supporting this at all tonight. The Finance Committees, our, our purpose is to, you know, safeguard the assets as a check before it comes back to the full council and to ask to rush things and bypass this process. And I know, I know that this process, you're saying, goes back years, but this is setting a really bad precedence. We have things that have been on the docket, and we have things that we've been talking about for years. We have, just the past two years alone, I'm just thinking of the Zoom. So, you know, we can't seem to get out of a committee, even though it's been approved, to have meetings be, you know, be able to have Zoom meetings, and that's been two years. So like, I could, I guess I could start putting deadlines on that, had I known enough I could do that. We also have the, trying to think the things that we have in, that's the council rulebook, right? That's been two years in the making, and I would like to now set deadlines for that as well. There's many things that we could be working on and setting deadlines, and I think this really sets a bad precedent, and we need to have our due diligence. And what I saw last, earlier today in the Finance Meeting, the information that we got was severely lacking. Not the time on the field, but the information that we received in an email that was basically, I, I wasn't able to speak because the meeting went over, but it was sorely lacking in detail. And we need to do more. We need to do our due diligence. And I find it really insulting to have a deadline put on us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor McDonald.
Well, as the chair of the Finance Committee, you know, I actually think we're all on the same timeline here. I mean, I take my responsibility very seriously as chair. I have a chart where I keep track of all the things that have been referred, how much time we have, how many dates are on the calendar, what we can fit where. I'm in conversation every week with our clerk and our clerk of committees about how to make all, all of that work. So, you know, I think I'm very mindful of the need to spend quality time in the Finance Committee on the upcoming budget. So that's a big part of what's driving our timing at the moment. I also think that, you know, while there has been certainly plenty of conversation about this, I, I think we're having, I think we're having good conversations in the Finance Committee. We, there's a lot, there's certainly a lot to talk about, but I, I really appreciated the chance to have the city staff come back with some really excellent data about field utilization today. And so, if I had had a chance to talk with either of you before you filed this paper, I would have told you that that's my intent as well. And I think under Robert's Rules, you can submit a motion, you know, you can submit a motion to discharge something from a committee at any time, just like you can refer it to a committee. So, you know, I don't think that it's necessary for you to put a timeline on the Finance Committee. I think you could still, you know, you've signaled your intent to potentially discharge this, and you can always do that if you so choose. But we're scheduled to have another meeting next week. We'll probably start in on the budget and on the 23rd, and we'll need to do that anyways. So, you know, I'm first-year Finance Chair over here. I'm doing my best. I think we're all trying to do our best. We had a good meeting today. I don't want to add another incendiary element to this whole conversation. It will have to come back here anyways, regardless of what we do. We all know that. It's going to be up to the full council to decide how to proceed on these papers. So I would just ask that maybe we could place this, place this one on file. I hear you. I hear your intent. We're all in the same timeframe. I just don't think that we need to add another element that feels pressuring and incendiary. So I, I will, I would not vote to support this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Counselor Spatafora.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I think Counselor McDonald, I think you did say it eloquently, and I, I certainly understand you being the first Finance Chair. And I would say the debate today, we had, not as ever the Finance Committee was well, well-attended. I think everybody was on great behavior, which is great. And it is certainly a hot topic. It has been for five years. I would just say I support this because I, I was concerned the last meeting, not the previous one, the, the meeting following that, just in terms of, the only thing that I see changing in here unfortunately is not the votes. Let's be honest with everybody on this table. We can bring all the experts we want in. The only thing that's changing is the amount of money the city of Malden is literally wasting at this point. And my concern is if there, if there truly is some way to get through this, it is to take the vote, move forward, whatever directions it goes, and I'm not here to labor either side. But if there is, if, if we're going to spend any money to do anything with that facility, whether clean it up or put turf there, we're going to be spending more money the longer we debate this. Because everybody knows what's going on in the economy, between delays of, of supplies and labor increases, it's costing us millions of dollars more. And I've been, we've been talking about this for five years. And while we have gotten pieces of new information, nothing has changed in my mind, and I value the other side of the agreement. But the reason why I think it's time to put this to a vote, I, I'm getting concerned that there are, there were some deliberate stall tactics happening, not, not by, you know, I'm not going to say any members, but I think there was some deliberate stall tactics. And I hope the vote is happening next week in the Finance Committee, because as Counselor McDonald said, even it comes back with the Finance Committee not supporting any of the initiatives, the council still votes on it. So all we're really doing is just trying to secure a vote for this. To be quite honest, there's a lot of other great work this council's doing. I want to put it behind me, whatever way or whatever direction it goes. We've just talked about increasing green space, doing parks over, changing the road work, zoning amendments, changing certain parts of, there's a lot of work ahead of us, and we've spent a lot of hours on this. And if anybody up here is going to tell me they've, they changed their mind because of what they've heard, I would love to see that, because I, I don't think anybody's changed their mind, good, bad or indifferent. So I'm just ready to just, you know, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be passive aggressive. I'm just ready to put this past us in terms of yea or nay. That's it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Spatafora. Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate it. Well, I, I agree, I agree with Counselor Spatafora that it's been five years and in the making, and we've got to stop the bleeding at some point. I already said what I was doing in the subcommittee meeting as far as my vote is concerned, and it's still that way. And we do have to stop the bleeding. But at the same token, I have to say that I think that Counsel McDonald's been doing a good job with the, with the Finance Committee. And I, I don't know, I just think it would be a little bit disrespectful to put a timetable on them. I mean, I don't know, Counselor, when do you think you're going to have this turned around and sent back up here to us to take a full vote on this? You know, because I, listen, I'm, I'm with, I'm, I'm with moving forward and getting this thing done. I know where I'm going, but out of respect for you as being the chairman of the Finance Committee, as being a new Counselor, you know, you're doing a good job. I think that would be disrespectful to do that. At the same time, though, what would be the timeframe you think that would be coming back to us?
Yeah, so as, as we stated in the Finance Committee today, my hope is to take a vote on this next week because we have to move on. I mean, we have other things on our agenda. And, you know, the, so that, that's how we ended the Finance Committee last week. As I said, I think we're on the same timeframe. So I think that you could put the paper, we could put this paper on file. You would still have the ability to compel it back if for some reason that didn't happen next week. You could just file a motion to recommit it back to the full council in time for the 23rd agenda. We don't need to pass an additional timeline at this stage in order for you to preserve that option.
I still have the floor?
Yes, you do.
I would just, I mean, out of respect for Counselor McDonald, I just think that if he's asking for a week as the chairman to turn this thing around, I, I don't, I, I would want to be able to grant him that. I mean, we've been, it's been five years. What's another week? Oh, it's a respect thing.
Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam President. So I'm, I'm of a split opinion. You know, I don't think that timelines are a bad thing. I won't be able to support this tonight because I do think, starting with this project, and starting with timelines on this project, where we're at is probably not the way to build trust. You know, we were kind of rushed from actually having a substantive conversation at today's meeting. We, we heard a lot of information, but we didn't really have a chance to really engage with that. And I do think the next step is important, that there is trust there, which is why at the last Finance Meeting, I stated what I truly believe is, is the truth, that there is not a lot of trust out there. And that if we are to move forward with a substantial amount of bonding and a substantial amount of free cash being spent, having trust on the numbers is really important. So I don't think that we necessarily need to rush it. I'm also with Counselor McDonald. I do think that we're going to get it done quickly. I also agree with Counselor Spatafora that, you know, the longer we wait, the more expensive it gets. I am holding out hope there that there is a chance we can get to a win-win situation that involves grass at Roosevelt and remediation down to three feet and sees a cleaned-up, fixed Maplewood Park. I'm beginning to believe that that window is getting smaller and smaller and not possible. I hope that we can somehow make that happen. But I feel like I've kind of left everything on the field, pun intended, and it's really up to others to see that over the finish line. So I can't support this tonight, but I think that setting timelines for committees is not a bad thing in the future.
Counselor Winslow, I saw you there, but you're gone. Did you shut your light off?
No, I, I might like, I did press it, so yes.
Somehow, I have Counselor Sika, oh, there you are, okay. Move up there. Okay, hold on a second. No, we have Counselor Sika and Counselor Condon, but you are ahead of them if you wanted to.
Well, why don't you let Counselor Condon and Sika speak now?
Okay. Counselor Sika.
Thank you, Council President. I, like Counselor Spatafora and Counselor Winslow, I believe that this particular topic does need to have a timeline. I do respect Counselor McDonald's point, though, too. So I, I was in favor of voting on this resolve, but I'm also in favor of placing it on file as long as we can, you know, come to an agreement. Because Counselor Spatafora is correct, it's been five years. We've already voted on turf. I think a lot of the public is misinformed on the things that I've seen on social media or any way. They think that we're going to change our mind. These financial papers are nothing about us going from turf to grass. We already voted years ago on making Roosevelt turf. That's a done deal. This is, this is now, one paper is because we've waited so long, it's going to cost $1.3 million more for us to do this project if we did it three years ago when we could have. And the other paper is for us to go down an additional foot and a half to get rid of the contamination, which I think we definitely want to do that. And we're either going to vote in favor of spending an extra $1.3 million, or we're going to vote against it. I don't think us being in a Finance Committee meeting discussing all these pros and cons versus grass versus turf, we've already done that. We, this is now, this is about financial papers. So I think using the Finance Committee to stall this project even longer would, would not be a good idea. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that you're, you have a timeline and you're looking to utilize it, because I think this particular topic needs to have it, because I think this particular topic needs to have a timeline. We've, we've already, like Counselor Spatafora said, we've already wasted plenty of time on this topic. It's time to start moving, moving in, onto other and bigger and better things that we are working on. So I am in support of, either way, we want to do this. I, I hope, you know, maybe we give Counselor McDonald the respect that he deserves and we do place this on file, and, and next week during the Finance Committee, somebody on the Finance Committee can make the motion to recommend it out, whether it gets recommended out favorably or not. It, it still needs to come out here, and what we're hashing in that committee, we can all hash out here in a, a committee, in a full council meeting where there is no timeline and nobody is being stopped because we have a deadline of seven o'clock to get on TV. So I, I think that we need to move this along. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Seega. Counselor Condon is next. Counselor Condon.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam President. This is very difficult because I've watched how Counselor McDonald works, and I've probably served on 28 Finance Committees. I don't want to tell you what my age is, but he's as thorough, he's as thorough as anyone I've ever been associated with, and I've really come to respect him because I've never seen him try to embarrass any other counselors, and I, and I hope that's not what, what's happening here. Because I can tell you right now, I, I have a lot of confidence that we'll get a vote next week. And when Counselor McDonald says that, I tend to believe him. So I don't think there's any harm in putting the thing on file, I'd be in favor of it, and, kind of surprised, because you could discharge it from committee. We've seen it happen a lot of times, you know. I don't think minds have changed at all, so.
I am going to go.
Let's do the right thing, guys.
I will.
Ladies.
Will you call your motion to tables?
Motion to table. So leave it on file. No, to put it on file.
What, what table?
No, not table.
Put it on file.
Put it in, put it in on file.
There's a difference between putting it on file.
Table will be on the agenda for her.
Right.
Yeah, wait on me.
Yeah, you don't have to, no table.
But if you put it on file, can we bring it up?
No, if you put it on.
We could discharge it from the committee.
We'd have to, we'd have to, we'd have to. It doesn't come out.
We, we, we have to, we have to have the ability to. This is a step that just.
Counselor Winslow, let me, Counselor Winslow, let me get you on.
Under the, under the Roberts rules, a step in the discharge process is to give the committee that is responsible to the paper a deadline. So we should not put that on file. We should put that on table so that, you know, I mean, we're, I think we here, we're going to trust the committee to do its due diligence and, and then, but, but it is on, you know, the paper's on table if that's not happening, so.
It should be tabled.
I, I have a number of lights. I was trying to, so, okay, so we have, we have a motion to table, which takes precedence. We have, do we have a second for that?
Second to table it?
Huh?
Second to table it?
Yes. Okay, seconded by Counselor Spatafora. Okay. There are lights, we can continue discussion, or we can just take a vote on the table? I mean.
Oh, yeah, it's Counselor Linnahan's microphone.
Okay, I, well, there's, there's a number of people. Counselor, Counselor.
The chair has spoken yet.
I, I know that, and Counselor, Counselor Crowe had her light on too, but she did shut it off.
I'm going to have to Counselor.
I know you were, I know you were, but there were, Counselor Hayes was ahead of you, Counselor Siminelli was ahead of both of you. So I was just trying to, I was trying to get the lay of the land. So I'm going to go to the counselors who haven't spoken yet, if they still want to speak.
Yes, please.
Counselor Linnahan.
Thank you. I do want to have just a point of information before we take the tabling vote. I do want to understand the diff, what the difference is between placing on file and tabling, because I'm hearing two different things, and I want to understand, it seems like the consensus is that we don't feel we need to take this action, but that if we place it on the table, that it leaves that option open down the line, which is not what I'm hearing from what folks are saying. For my personal point of view, you know, I, I had not intended to support this. I'm glad we seem to be moving in a direction. Thank you, Counselor Seega, for proposing placing on file or tabling. I, you know, as someone who also chaired a committee my first year on the council, it's incredibly daunting, and I can't actually imagine if it had been the Finance Committee. I mean, we happened to have a very busy year in public property that year, and I thought I was going to lose my mind, but like, this is a whole other level. And I, as a member of the committee, just want to speak to what I'm, what I feel like could veer into disrespect for the job that Counselor McDonald is doing. It's not just hard, and he's doing, I think, a very clear and cogent job. He communicates with all of us so that we understand where things are moving. I did not perceive a delay to this at all before we docketed this and before we came here tonight. I, I, my intent was to be prepared to vote on this tonight, actually, in committee, if we had gotten through the presentations and the discussion. I actually don't think it was the counselors' discussion that made us take a long time. It was the depth of the presentations we got, which, as they should be for something this serious. I fully understand, to Counselor Seega's point, this is actually not a grass versus turf vote. These are financial papers that no doubt dictate the path that we can take and the amount of money we're going to spend, but that decision is, is already put to bed. If we revisited it down the line, then whether we choose the lower depth or the shallower depth absolutely makes a difference. But that's not actually what we're talking about right now. I don't think anybody wants to delay this any further in the climate of inflation that we're facing. And also just the community wants us to, I think, get to a decision point here. And I will say that that Finance Committee that we had a few weeks ago is probably the most input that I've ever gotten from the community in recent memory on any issue, in terms of feeling like they were heard and had an opportunity for things to be explained and give us kind of status check on, what are we talking about? What are these papers? Where are we, what are we working towards? What have we considered? What did we fail to get the votes for? And where, where, where does that leave us now? So I think no matter which side you land on, I, what I'm hearing from the community is that we have actually done a good thing by holding a comprehensive committee meeting a few weeks ago and by televising it so that people could understand and watch it later. And I think that's to Counselor McDonald's credit as well for making sure that folks have that access. So, you know, again, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but I do feel like it's important to be accountable. Everything along the way, as we talk about this issue, if you don't explain your vote, I think leaves you vulnerable to interpretation. So I want that to be really clear. But I, I do actually also want to get an answer to this question about why, is there a disadvantage to tabling versus placing on file? I just want to understand what I'm voting on before we do that.
Seiya.
I'm going to have to look that one up.
And I, I think I could take a stab at it, too. If, if we place it on file, it's on file, and it actually doesn't really exist anymore to come back to the floor, to be brought up. If we place it, if we table it, then it can be taken off the table.
And could come back.
And, and can come back.
Well, I guess I'm fine either way. I think what I'm hearing and what I understood going into tonight was that we were going to vote on this as soon as possible in committee. So I'm going to continue to trust that just because we didn't get there tonight, I think I have full confidence that we're going to get there next week, and I heard that in committee. I heard that from Counselor McDonald before, I saw this on the docket. So I think that is for sure how we're proceeding, and I feel fine to take that vote. If, if, if the, I understand a tabling motion takes precedence, so if we want to do that, that's fine.
So if we do have a motion to table, all the other lights that are on now are people that have spoken before, so can we, is everybody good? Let's just take, take the, take the call. Okay. All right. On Counselor Condon's motion to table.
No, it's Counsel Seega's.
Counsel Seega's motion to table. Tabled, seconded by?
Counsel Spatafora.
Counsel Spatafora.
Yep.
Okay.
Right?
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Nay.
So we have one nay. Counselor O'Malley. Okay. Tabling motion has passed. Next order of business. Oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry. We have one more, I'm sorry. We have one more. Would you please, we do have a communication on this topic from the mayor, if you would please read it.
Dear City Council, President Murphy, and members of the council, I write this letter to follow up on the recent Finance Committee meeting regarding Roosevelt Park. As we all know, this project has been won with more than its share of challenges as we try to build consensus on a solution while balancing conflicting priorities. However, our city employees and those we engage to help us address these challenges and conflicting priorities deserve to be treated with more respect than what they experienced at the last meeting by City Councilor Ryan O'Malley. I met last week with the owner of Hayner Swanson to discuss the meeting, and I agreed that as a city, we can and should do better. Steve O'Neill, who was raised in Malden and graduated from Malden Catholic High School, has worked with the city for decades, and I can't remember a time that his character was ever questioned. What I can tell you is that I'm not sure I've ever met an individual more class and integrity than Steve. I've assured them that my administration continues to have utmost confidence in their integrity and have directed them to continue to represent us at meetings, to be available to answer well-intentioned questions from those looking for valuable information as the conversation and dialogue progresses. Lastly, I would encourage the City Council to sponsor and pass a resolution that all employees and professionals retained by the city be treated with respect by all members of the City Council. Anyone believing this type of behavior is necessary to get the job done is badly mistaken. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Gary Christensen, Mayor.
Yes, you may respond.
So I do, I do feel like it's necessary to respond to that. I don't think stating a fact that there is a lack of trust in the direction Roosevelt Park has taken is disrespectful to staff. I do think that it is honest about how our community is failing with this particular project. I do not have a personal relationship with Steve O'Neill and Hayner Swanson. I do not have a professional relationship with either of those individuals. I do know that in the past, the community as well as the council has asked for information related to the cost of grass. I know that we've asked for information related to the utilization of fields, and it, it took the last Finance Meeting to get that. And so I do think that that was a very productive Finance Committee. I think that I stand by the questions that I asked and the statements that I made. I do feel like I treated everyone with respect. I stated a fact. I do look forward to developing a relationship of trust with Mr. O'Neill and Hayner Swanson, and I hope it's on this project or future projects. But I do think asking direct questions of our staff and of our contractors is important, due diligence that is necessary. So I respectfully disagree with, with Mayor Christensen's characterization of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Next order of business.
You're going to take any lights?
I believe these are all for personal privilege.
Do you have a light?
I mean, it, it, does anyone have a light on that's not about personal privilege? Okay, you do, okay. Counselor Hayes.
Yes, I was just.
Wait a minute. There you go.
Thank you. Just since Counselor O'Malley was allowed to say something on that letter, I don't have actually a particular thing to say about the letter that came down. What I did want to say before the table, the paper was tabled was, I believe that these robust conversations that are happening in the finance have been tremendous. And so I think we are, we talked about getting it out, we're going to do our due diligence, but for the people watching out here, I have never had such great feedback about the fact that they've never heard or seen a Finance Committee like that, because it was also on, you know, it was recorded, so people were able to watch it. But for the community to be able to see our discussions and see how detailed we are and how much care and responsibility we have with our taxpayers' monies is excellent. So I don't regret any one of those meetings, and I'm glad we're going to have another one, and we do know that we're going to get it out of here. We all know that the votes aren't going to change. This was mostly about letting the community know that we're doing our due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hayes. Everybody else whose light's on is for personal privilege? Is that correct? Okay.
Docket is clear.
Docket is clear. So, personal privilege. Counselor Siminelli.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say that you did a fine job tonight, and the clerk, too. I think you guys were like really busy over there with some complications, and you did a fantastic job tonight. I just want to say thank you to the DPW, particularly Director Knox and his Parks Department, folks for making my parks very pretty. And I want to also thank the Malden Police Department, because we just started doing the community policing at the same time with Bowden Street Apartments, with Wind Development stepping up their stake in the game with all kinds of different programs. We're going to actually be rolling those things out in the near future, because we're just tightening things up a little bit before we do that. But I do want to give them a shout out here from the council. And I want to thank the Malden Housing Authority, particularly the Director, Steven Finn, helping us put together a tenants' association down at the Suffolk Manor, which is very important to do programs down there. And we got the okay today to do the community gardens. We're going to build some community gardens in the Suffolk Manor so the seniors can have some fun growing some things over there. So I just wanted to say thanks to all those folks. If I missed anybody, I'll get you next time.
Thank you, Counselor Siminelli. Counselor Seega.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to remind everybody that Counselor Spatafora and you and myself have the Fisher Derby a week from Saturday, May 20th, from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. at Pine Banks. As of this afternoon, when I spoke to Joe Levine, we had 150 kids registered for this event, so it's, seems like it's going to be a huge success. That's about, it's catching, yeah. It's about, that's double what we had for attendance last year, and I thought last year looked pretty amazing. So we're going to give everybody till this Friday to go online and register to vote. So, registered to vote, my God. Registered to fish, so if, looking at my voting packet here. If you haven't registered to fish, please register by this Friday. Of course, we will never turn anyone away that, that morning of if you decide to come, but just so we can kind of have a little bit of an idea of how many things we need to buy for everybody. So next Saturday, May 20th, from 10:00 to 1:00 at Pine Banks for the fishing derby. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Seega. Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Madam President. There's a couple of things going on. This Thursday, both on Zoom and here at City Hall, we're having a neighborhood community meeting regarding 213 Main Street, which is the old Salvation Army. We, it's a proposal to do 100% affordable housing. ACDC is the developer. So it's 6:00 to 7:30. You can come in person, and if anyone needs the link, I'll make sure it's on the city website, or you can reach out to me and I'll send it to you. I put it on social media. But just to sort of hear what, what's going on, what's going to happen, how we're going to move forward, I'm very excited about this project. And then I just want to say Happy Mother's Day to everybody up there. And on Mother's Day, we have our annual Mother's Day Breakfast from 9:30 to 11:30 at Anthony's, 105 Canal Street, Wood One, but it's open to everybody. Come on down, celebrate mom, sisters, aunts, or just the important women in your life. So again, have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crowe. Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, I, I also too want to thank Bob Knox for his crew. We actually got the old container from East Side Little League out of Trachten Park this week, and within an hour, his crew was out there cleaning up some stuff, so it was great to see that. We are going to do some more cleanup on Saturday, May 13th, in the Trachten Dog Park at 9:00. So come out, bring some gloves. We're trying to get more glass out of there. I'm going to have a shop back and, and other things, but, so that's scheduled, that 9:00 to the Trachten Dog Park, and we'll, we'll do litter cleanup, too. Then actually at 1:00 on the 13th, in Maplewood Square, in preparation of Maplewood Fest, we're going to do a litter cleanup around Maplewood Square. And then everybody, go to the fishing derby early, so you can come to Maplewood Fest, which is from 9:00 to 4:00 on May 20th.[1794.25] is from 9:00 to 4:00 on May 20th. We have some great music, a lot of.
Nine, not nine.
What? Oh, I mean noon to 4:00, I'm sorry. Noon, noon to 4:00, not. I will be there at 9:00, but Barbie, you don't have to be there until noon. See, at 9:00 to, noon to 4:00 on May 20th, sorry. Maplewood Fest, we have some great artists and music, soul, Latin, jazz. It'll be real fun. Entertainment, a lot of local artists and vintage clothing and other type of things. So it's going to be a fun. We had a great, this is second annual, we had a great time last year. Looks like a great weekend, so come on out to Maplewood Fest and support Maplewood Square. I also want to thank, last night, I went with Alex Pratt from Community Development Office to Boston University and saw the presentations from the students of their final ideas. And so we'll be, the future Maplewood Square Committee, I'll be getting all their kind of final recommendations, and we'll be kind of going through that. So looking to, you know, help put together that vision for Maplewood Square. Thank you. Great.
Thank you, Counsel window. Counselor Condon.
Yes, thank you, Counsel President. I'd like to state again that we're running Ward Two and Ward One, Fourth of July, on the Fourth of July, at Callahan and McDonald Stadium. Please come. I think you'll have a good time. There'll be a tug of war between Wards One and Two. Now, if you, I hope I'm not out of order here, but I'd like to thank the mayor for that letter, because I've known Steve O'Neill for a long time. We're not personal friends, but he's a very, very professional man, and I think he was very much embarrassed by what took place. And I'm sorry Ryan did that. Counselor O'Malley did that. I don't think he deserved what was said about him. And the projects he, he's worked on, he's helped us with the streets, he's always been very professional, and I hope maybe you'll get to, make the time to get to know the man as a professional. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. I think Counselor Condon, I think Counselor Crowe wanted you to mention movie night on the.
Third.
On the third.
Back to the Fourth of July.
At Green Street.
We have a movie night at Green Street Park. As always, Counselor Crowe puts on a great show. We also will have a basketball, the basketball program where we, the Levine family, Joe will be running that basketball tournament, and we'll be giving out awards. It's being run in memory of his mother that tragically passed years back. But I hope you can all join us. The movie will be good. Thank you.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you. I, speaking of the finance committee schedule, just wanted to let you all know, we're going to be starting budget hearings soon. And I expect that we'll do a prelim, like a first presentation on the 23rd, and so I will need to be reaching out to additional city departments to be figuring out what we're going to need on the schedule. So if you have a particular interest in seeing the, in seeing us or hearing from a city department, please reach out to me or reach out to Lisa when she's back. And I'll let you know, we will of course need to bring in the school department. They have a substantial increase this year in state funding, and so there's a lot going on with the school department. And, and we'll have them in for one meeting, but we still have some additional, you know, we, we haven't booked up the whole time I'm working on the schedule now. So please just let me know if there's any department you're particularly interested in hearing from, so I can build the calendar and reach out to our department director as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam President. It's been quite a roller coaster for me tonight, from getting all these sponsors to getting called out multiple times, but, you know, we roll with the punches. I, you know, I, when it, when it comes to the Roosevelt discussion, you know, everyone knows where I've standered on it. I've really tried the last couple of weeks to, to pull it all together and get both sides to try to come to an agreement. It's becoming, like I said, increasingly clear that that's not possible, and, and that's upsetting. I do stand by the hardcore questions I asked in finance, respectfully, Counselor Condon. You know, one of the things that we did learn, even though I, I do think that the, the grass memo that we've been given is, is lacking in detail, it does give us some of the things that we asked for. You know, but I do think that the, the work that the recreation department did was exceptionally good. So I do want to give, you know, Joe Levine and Laura Perez a shout out when it comes to that. They really did come with the data, and I think I am comfortable when it comes to understanding what our park utilization is like. One of the things that we did learn for the community, so everyone should know, you know, right now, we are getting by, even though Dever, Trachten, Quorumley, Lincoln Commons, and Roosevelt Park are either out of commission entirely, partially, or are not being scheduled for any recreational activities. So I do think that if we were to better utilize our existing fields, we may be able to achieve a win-win where Roosevelt is entirely remedied down to three feet, which would allow grass, and, and allows the turf funding to be shifted to Maplewood Park and Ward Seven, and ideally put on a, a schedule to clean it up. But, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not here to twist people's arms. I've tried my best when it comes to that. But, you know, I also do think that our staff and, and our contractors really should have been providing this information years ago, so that this conversation wouldn't be happening now. I do, on a, on a, on a more lighthearted note, want to wish all the mothers in our community and in the room a Happy Mother's Day that's coming up. Looking forward to, to Counselor Crowe's annual event. Does Prisco still make pasta? Do they still sell pasta in the back? No, not anymore?
I think it's only wholesale.
Wholesale? Okay, so I got to talk to you. So, you know, wishing everyone a Happy Mother's Day. Obviously, you know, wishing my mom the most wonderful Mother's Day. And I do want to end by thanking Paul Hammersley, PJ, and the crew, Linda. You know, the, what has been accomplished in our community with, with Malden overcoming addiction and the Malden Cares team is just remarkable. And the fact that we have data that shows Malden is beating national statistics. And I do want to state it one more time, so everyone is aware of the, of the statistic that is so incredible. We are over doubling the amount of people who are going from detox into sobriety. And, and, you know, it was worth the standing ovation, and I'm just so thankful to, to Paul and to this council for supporting that activity. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Lenihan.
I'll be brief. Thank you. I did just want to let folks know that we are starting back up with our Courthouse Arts and Culture Center planning project. We have a new steering committee that we've appointed that is going to be taking us through the next few years. And our first meeting is tomorrow night. I didn't see the Zoom on the city website, so I will double check and make sure that gets posted. Would love to have folks participate. We're basically engaged with some consultants to look at, drill down into some more specific uses from the concept plan, more specific things like what size performance space, how many studios, do we need concessions or a kitchen, things like that. So I think it's an exciting phase, and then we're going to be working with a consultant to also do a business analysis to make sure that the center is sustainable and can make money and, you know, is self-sustaining, basically. So stay tuned for that. That's tomorrow night, and we'll be meeting probably every month over the next year plus. And then I did just want to circle back on, when we did the moment of silence for Tom earlier, I forgot to mention that the Bread of Life is hoping in lieu of a memorial or celebration of life to actually do a community dinner, or community meal of some sort that would be open to all. And they're hoping to do that at the end of May, and just to please check their Facebook page for the date as they get things finalized. So that was one thing I had meant to share and forgot to share, so I didn't want that to go unsaid. And that's all I've got.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you. I just lost the flyer that I was going to talk about, so give me one minute. Oh, so, all right. I wanted to mention, first of all, I'm a proud mama of a, a senior at Malden High, and she's also in the National Honor Society, so I wanted to announce that they were having a field day. And it's this weekend they're hosting, so Noel Hayes and Peyton, and Peyton Carroll and Gianna Downey are hosting a field day at McDonald Stadium in honor. All the proceeds will go to the Terrence Clark Foundation. But tonight, that Laura Perez actually let me know that the registration is closed. I was going to announce it, but that's great. That means that a lot of kids have signed up, and I'm really proud of them. So I'm not going to ask you to join up and register, because it's closed, but I do want to give a shout out to them, because they're doing a great job. And then on that note, on softball, the senior night for the girls' softball is this Friday down at McDonald Stadium. So if you want to come out, I believe their game starts at 4:00, and cheer them on and say hi to the seniors. And that's it. I'll post that, just to make sure I got that time right. Oh, did I say graduation? It's a senior softball.
When's graduation?
Graduation is June 4th. June 4th. Yes, so I can say that out, too. Yeah, I'm planning the party now. Got a lot of things going on in my head right now. But anyway, the, if you want to come out and support the softball and just say hi to, and bye to the seniors, it's Friday at McDonald Stadium. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Cologne Hayes. Oh, I'm sorry. That's, sorry, Counsel Seeca. Counsel Seeca.
I apologize. I was so busy trying to be the fir, one of the first ones to speak that I forgot to wish my mother a Happy Mother's Day, and I'm sure that she is still watching this meeting at this moment. So I would just like to wish my mother a Happy Mother's Day, and then my daughter is turning 24 on Saturday. No birthday party. Don't be smart. However, I did, however, no, listen, I'll make you laugh. However, I did contemplate having one for my son, because he's going to be 21 next So Happy Birthday to my daughter and to my son. Thank you.
I was thinking the same thing, too.
I was, too. I was just like. You were quick, Counselor Spatafora. So just, I, I do want to wish all the mothers and caregivers a Happy Mother's Day out there. So you don't have to, have to have the title mom to actually celebrate this day. Any woman out there who's taking care of a child or acting, you know, in that role or capacity deserves to celebrate Mother's Day. And then just on the Roosevelt Park issue, Counselor McDonald, I truly thank you for your commitment to getting the paper out next week. The, and I'm sorry that you feel, you know, that maybe it was a little insulting, but the whole gist of it was, was to just make sure that it got out. And one of the reasons that it was done as, it was on the docket this week was to give notice. It wasn't to just surprise somebody in a week or two by doing it. So it was actually, it was being done to just make sure we could get this discussion going, we could all come to a consensus that we would get this paper out. As someone who has lived this project for, I'm going to say, way too many years, I think it was on the docket when I first got elected 14 years ago, because I was actually dealing with, with Mayor Howard at that time, this project has taken on a life of its own, and I for one would like to see a vote happen on this. I think we have all talked about this project ad nauseam. It has been through multiple court cases, and it's time for us to come to a decision as a full council, and it does need to get out here to the full table for us to actually, you know, make a decision on this, especially before we recess for the summer. And as you said earlier, we do have the budget that we have to contend with. So I appreciate your commitment to taking that vote effort. Most of your finance committee members state that they were on board with that to happen next week, so we'll look forward to, to that decision and taking it up at the full council. So thank you very much. Motion to adjourn from Counselor Spatafora, seconded by Counselor Siminelli. All in favor? I oppose. Nay. Thank you. We are adjourned.